It is now seven o'clock.
Thank you, Jason. Ms. Clark, are we ready to begin?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly are.
Okay, I'm Mayor Diane Marlin. Welcome, everybody. I wanted to let you know we have three meetings tonight. The first will be a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 22. The second meeting is a special meeting of the Urbana City Council to consider appointments to a board and commission, and that will be followed by the regular committee of the whole meeting chaired by Ward Three Councilperson Sharice Hershey. So we'll start with the public hearing on the proposed budget. Notice is hereby given that the proposed annual budget for the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, state of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 22, is on file. The hearing will begin at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 7th, 2021. Estimated revenues for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-22 are $53.4 million, and estimated expenditures are $58.7 million. I'd like to call this hearing to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item on the agenda is public input on the proposed fiscal year 22 budget. If you'd like to provide input, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. First up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Thank you. My audio setup's a little wonky. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, and could you put up the clock, please? Much appreciated. I'm ready to start when you are.
Go ahead, Alan.
All right. My name is Alan Max Axelrod. I am a co-chair of the Champaign-Urbana DSA. I'm showing up tonight to basically express what our membership has voted to endorse, and I hope that we'll be hearing from additional members shortly. We would like the city of Urbana to answer the call that was announced by Eddie Pratt at the Champaign City Council meeting not too long ago to match the $1 million in funding that the Black Legislative Caucus has provided to Parkland for the short-term workforce training program. This is a program that in the span of one year, while covering the tuition and fees, just like graduate employees at the university, right? Plus, a potential stipend, will be able to get jobs starting at $50,000 a year. That is well above the median individual income of both Champaign and Urbana. This is a direct investment in our community. And as other speakers will undoubtedly note, this is a way to curb the violence that poverty incentivizes people to resort to, to survive. I also want to note on a personal level that I'm a little bit shocked that after the discussions that we had in the winter of 2019 about how it was a one-time payment of $300,000 for our school resource officers, that it is not a one-time payment. I understand that the school district is having some budgetary issues as a lot of people have talked about, and I hope that they sunset that, but I want us to think seriously about what we are doing with our money. That could go to First Followers. That could go to Courage Connection, where we have a large number of phone calls that are for domestic violence. That should be what investing in our community looks like. And as I understand it, there's going to be a lot of speakers tonight, so I'm going to sign off early. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bianca Nihon.
Yes, hello. Yes, hi. Can I have the time up as well, please? Thank you. I'm also the other co-chair of DSA. I'm Democratic Socialist of America. I'm also a four-year resident in Urbana. I just wanted to echo Alan's sentiments, especially regarding the opportunities that the SWIFT program would allow the people in this community to have access to not only better education, but the ability to avoid potentially traumatic or violent situations, particularly in regards to domestic violence. As we know, the lot of the reasons why women or people in lower economic situations are more prone to be in these particular situations is because of their lack of access to economic alternatives and their lack of ability to find these alternatives and protect themselves and their family and loved ones. So if we can have that opportunity expanded, particularly in these communities where people of color are primarily the victims of not only these these issues, but also they have them, allow them to have the opportunities that they can help themselves and just take care of themselves and make a living wage that's respectable, respectable to them, for them. Also want to echo the sentiments of matching the $1 million amount. I believe with the amount that we currently have, we have the ability to fund 300 people in order to follow through with this program. So if we could up that amount, I mean, the, I think that would be very helpful for us and it will help a lot of people in the community that need it the most. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hi, am I coming through clearly?
Yes, you are.
Great, great. Hi, I am Eddie Pratt Jr. I am the creator of the CU Human Rights Coalition. I am a member of the CU DSA. I am in solidarity with First Followers. As you've already heard tonight, and as you will hear after me, me and all the rest of the people see something here, something that can be extremely helpful. When we're talking about things as equity, justice, when we're talking about wage inequality, when we're talking about mental health, when we're talking about theft crimes, it all leads back to the lack of access, the lack of ability to have a job that pays a living wage. People don't commit crimes, for the, for the most part, out of sheer boredom. They do it because they're pressed against the wall. They do it because they have responsibilities that they must provide for, and they don't have the normal means to do so. This, this builds stress. That stress, the anxiety can become traumatic, as we have all experienced here lately. Tonight, I'm asking you, whose keeper are you? Tonight, I am asking you to commit to matching $1 million, collaborate with the city of Champaign to both match $1 million into the SWIFT program. We all know that there's more than 300 people out here that need this. If we're going to attack the equation of what brings community violence into our community, which is desperation meets lack of opportunity or lack of alternatives, if we're not attacking those very things, we will not stand a chance at riding the ship. So I look forward to your commitment to being your brother's keeper, to bring, to being your sister's keeper, to being a good neighbor, to showing the country what equity looks like in the community, to give the power to the people to build their community on their own terms by being a supportive role in it. Is that not what you all are here for? It is my hope that that is exactly what you're here for. And I hope and look forward to seeing you use these ARP funds to fund programs like the ones at First Followers or at CU Trauma and Resilience, among other community members and community organizations like Hidden Home Boys, the CCR, or anyone else who is around here doing positive things for the community. I'm sure these things are not unknown to you all by now. Today is about doing something different. Today is about being done with regressive policy and reactive action. Today is about committing to the future. Today is about investing in people directly into the community. You can do this. Decide who you want to be, who you want to be remembered as. Someone who upheld this same system that began all these tragedies that we all swear we're so sad about, or someone that fought for a better future for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Thomas Lawless.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm here. I'm a member of the CU DSA. I'd also just kind of like to echo what other members of the CU DSA are calling for, which is additional funding for the SWIFT program. We'd like both Champaign and Urbana to put together about $1 million each for the program. I just want to say I'm tired of solutions that have failed our communities and brutalized our neighbors and my friends. I, I'm just, I'm sick of just waking up and thinking like, oh, is today going to be the day I have another mental health crisis? Is today the day I'm going to be another statistic? And I would just like to see the lifeline that I've been provided and allowed to. I have, I'm not, I haven't graduated from the SWIFT program, but I've been provided a similar lifeline. And just that ability to provide that to the community is something I feel deeply about and would like the city council to consider. I know that I have much more to say than that, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I am speaking tonight to echo previous city council public comments. And here tonight, it's support for housing, jobs, youth, and less for UPD or SROs. There's concern about SROs. There's concern about many programs. There've already been lots of training and studies about SEOs, SROs. My concerns are, will it be effective? Public input hasn't been asking for SROs and training. We want, it's been asking for help and accountability. Putting money toward school resource offices, you hope it will help, both training and I think another thing that you fund is spending to increase revenue. Both of these are hopes. On the other hand, emergency housing, rent help, job help, that's a guaranteed help, at least for a while. I know there are certain rules and conditions, maybe HUD or whoever. We need to research and push certain, and there's, we need to push when policies need to be changed. The No Shutoffs group is pushing about policies. Policies can be changed and revised. Policies should be revised when agreed goals aren't being met. So that's all for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is James Corbin.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. Yes, my name is James Corbin. I usually go by Tiger, which is transforming your goals in reality when I speak under motivation and get these young guys moving. I have been speaking here at this council meeting several times, and, and I'd just like to echo a lot of the words Eddie Pratt, his group. I think that's a great idea, as well as other, other things that we have been speaking on, such as the center to curb some of this violence. Just this weekend, we had lost another young man, 17. And you know, the loss of life, it continues. And it's affecting more than just the community. It's affecting the people who serve the community, such as our law enforcement. And we, we got to understand, we can't arrest our way out of this. That does not work. I have been in courtrooms, and I just heard some of the silliest things about judges who give these guys long sentences to say something like, well, we're going to send a message. Well, guess what? Your message is not being received because you are dealing with individuals who lack, but not lack for it, but are dealing with more of a reactive thinking instead of a proactive thinking. If it was a proactive thinker involved, such as someone who says, well, I'm going to be a doctor or lawyer, that individual is not out there like that. But these other individuals, like you said, a lack of these skill sets that could be trained through the SWIFT program, a lack of life skills, all these things can be put in their leadership. And that teaches a person, instead of being reactive, you could be proactive towards your situation. This is why we need those funds to go toward a center that will do wraparound service, that will have training, that will have individuals in there that could teach these leadership qualities. We want to develop more of what's called near peers, individuals that's close to their age group that could, that could curve this around. We can't be at every moment, and we don't, we cannot identify who's going to go off next. You know, who's under pressure to where they have to pick up a gun or feel like that? And most of these individuals that's picking up that gun or have a gun feel like they can't even go to law enforcement, so they feel they have to take the law into their own hands. But we have to change that sentiment, that thinking, that bringing in these centers, teacher leadership development, teacher skill sets such as that, going through the SWIFT program, paying them, get this other training, bringing them into a better way of thinking. We're gonna have to get ahead of it. We see all these, this is an epidemic nationwide. We see violence is on the rise in every city. This is no accident. This is all happening because these communities are underserved, and now it's showing. And all of a sudden, you know, I saw, it was a, I'm not going to say who, but they get on there and they plead, please put down the guns. That, that's just as silly as that commercial that used to come on, this is your brain. This is your brain on drugs. Get the message. No, they don't get the message. You know, you, that don't work. You can't, can't spin your way out of this this way. We're gonna have to get ahead of it. We're going to get into preventive measures that address these issues directly. And that, what Eddie Pratt is offering, what our group is now meeting and putting proposals together, is offering a preventive measure. Before we get there, we're gonna have to move fast because we're losing babies out here. You know, I just watched where a 10-year-old boy got shot on a porch in Chicago, and it's sad, man. It don't have to be this way. That's all I gotta say. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Albert Lamb.
Hi, my name is Albert Lamb. I live on 208 East California Avenue, which was recently purchased by Cunningham Township. On May 7th, a letter was posted on my front door informing me of the sale of the property and the options I had as a renter. Essentially, I was told that I needed to move out by August 15th. I spent the next two weeks searching for housing and I was hoping to find something that would be suitable and affordable for my situation as a student. On May 18th, I contacted Cunningham Township to let them know that I was unable to find such housing and to see if there were other options available. I contacted them again on May 25th and on June 1st. On June 1st, I finally received an email from Danielle Chinoweth saying the following. Quote, "It is clear that finding affordable options, even with a three-month timeframe, is proving difficult for some. That feedback is useful as we collaborate on a solution. Both parties, tenants and township, have found themselves in an unexpected and difficult situation created by a lack of transparency by the former owners. We're committed to ensuring current tenants are taken care of, so we are trying to recalibrate plans on our end as well. We will be in touch soon." Today, on June 7th, I received a follow-up email from Danielle that essentially said the same thing and gave me the same options as the letter that was posted on my door on May 7th. If my options would be the same, I could have been told this a month ago so that I could at least have time to make a plan to deal with a less than ideal situation. Also, I'm originally from California and have not been able to visit my mom and brother in a year and a half because of the pandemic. I was hoping to visit them after the end of the spring semester, now that I have been vaccinated, but stayed in Champaign so that I could spend time searching for housing. The continued uncertainty with the housing situation is preventing me from making concrete plans to see them. I find this whole situation to be really confusing and upsetting, especially since it seems to contradict the mission statement of the organization of which you are board members of. I hope you will look into the matter so that the noble cause of Cunningham Township can be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Janice Walker.
Good evening, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Janice Walker, and I reside in Urbana's Dr. Ellis Subdivision. I'm a volunteer fellow and survivor lead with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And I'm also part of a coalition that includes First Followers, CU Try, The Business Elevator, Bethel AME Church, faculty from Parkland College, Champaign PTA members, the NAACP, and other community members who are trying to prevent community violence, gun violence in particular, by intentional, intentionally addressing harm, healing, and hope. So we're calling our coalition the 3-H Coalition. When I say I'm a survivor of gun violence, it means I've loved and I still love family and friends who have been taken by gun violence. My brother was killed in 2010, and my cousin was killed in 2020. I've chosen to take my personal pain and turn it into purpose. Most recently, our community has suffered great tragedy from gun violence. Members who have been taken and/or injured are Kwan Sam Markum, Tavion Jones Primo, Marquise Lafayette, LeAndreas Thompson, and Officer Christopher Oberheim. And if I've missed someone, I apologize. The 3-H Coalition is asking for a specific amount of money from the American Rescue Plan funds to address community violence prevention. There are four reasons why. Since the pandemic, CU has seen a rise in violence, just like the rest of the nation has. Gun violence is an issue of racial justice. In our county, the vast majority of those involved in gun violence are young black men. Gun violence impacts not just individuals involved, but their family members and community members. Our county lacks programs and services to prevent community violence. What has been tried so far is not working. We need supports and service programs for those who have been impacted. This means mental health, housing support, safe spaces for people to meet, training for community support workers, opportunities for career paths with paid training for young people connected with violence, and programs that offer recreation and artistic outlets. We need to have these centers and services based in a local community center, a one-stop shop, if you will, with satellite centers throughout the county. We are prepared to come before you with a fully developed plan for your consideration. Please listen to the community's outcry. The great Representative John Lewis said, "When you see something that's not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up." So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Turnbull.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Okay, anyway, my name is Linda Turnbull. I wear many hats in this city. I'm coming to speak from my heart, just not to be speaking, to talking, to protest, talking about what other people can and cannot do. Because as long as everybody's doing something, no matter what it is, we can all come together as one. I experienced gun violence from a very young age. My sister was shot with a sawed-off shotgun in front of her kids. My mother took care of her children. Not only that, my nephew was killed five years ago and have not even found the person that done it. I have many friends been killed in this city. I know about gun violence. I've experienced it. I experienced it myself for many years, dealing with my sister's death. So I don't speak a whole lot about it because it was very, my family and the rest of my siblings. But what I do see is all this talking and nothing's done. None of this stuff has worked. I was just here at the shooting on Beersley, where I live at. I think it's been three young men's killed down there by Beersley and Fifth. Not only that, I've talked to many people in Champaign and Urbana, and they agree with what I say, even though some people might not agree. I have a lot of people that agree that we will have to put lights and cameras up in these, up in African-Americans' neighborhoods. We need the lights and cameras. Cameras are not afraid to talk. They're not, they don't feel intimidated. I was just out there, what, a day ago, and heard a young man on his porch, and I know he had to see the killing. He told the reporter, "I am not getting involved in this" because they're not, I'm not going to be, they come back and shoot me. You know what? Mostly everybody in this town is saying that, from the whole corner, everywhere. I talked to many people. I've registered over 5,000 people to vote in this city and even more. So not only me just talking, this is something that's been put on me for a long time. It's been a lot of leaders around here, like Terry Thompson, people like that. Nobody's bringing those people, those big activists, to the table. You need to be getting out there, bringing activists in this city. He's the biggest activist in this city, Terry Thompson. I've never seen him at any, I've seen him at one engagement. I see people not even invited in places, people that do a lot of work in this community. I'm not talking about cherry pick people, people because you just know them to be activists. I'm talking about real-life activists in our city that's been active for many and many years. Hallelujah. So we need to bring these people to the table. We need to find how to solve this stuff. And just like, everybody want to give a program here, a program there. All these programs, these people are still shooting. These are young people. They don't care. They don't have any heart about what they're doing. They're just going out here, waiting for the next one to pop off. So I'm gonna tell you right now, and my strong feeling is, if I have to get a petition signed for people So I'm gonna tell you right now, and my strong feeling is, if I have to get a petition signed for people saying this, we gotta put some cameras up around here. These cameras will get footage of these people that's committing this crime. They don't have to be scared like the rest of these people not to talk, because a lot of people know who's been doing this stuff. When my nephew got killed, it was forty people in that place, forty people, and not one person know nothing. Hallelujah, yes, they do. So we need cameras. Nobody's mentioned cameras. I've not heard anybody mention cameras. I never heard anybody with surveillance. We need them. I don't care if you get drones. You need something. And if you need me to go and try to raise money for you to help you, I will do that. Just ask me and I'll do it. I'll do it anyway. Find some way to get some cameras around in these African-American neighborhoods. More and more people, kids are getting killed, family members and everybody else. These programs have not worked. Hallelujah. We need those cameras to show them faces and lock these people up. So hallelujah, I don't care who doesn't like what I'm saying. I'm just saying this because this has gotten really bad out here. And all this money given to folks, we had, "Don't shoot," all this other stuff, still shooting. Hallelujah. Yes, I wore a shirt around saying, uh, "Put the guns down." I just put that on to put it there to say it. Hallelujah, but I'm not saying that's gonna do anything, but we gotta get something done here. All this talking and giving money away, we need those cameras. And we need people watching.
Ms. Turnbull, your time's up, but thank you very much.
Okay, hallelujah. I hope y'all got some of that in you, because I'm really.
We heard you. Thank you. Um, next up is Arthur Paganini.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, uh, so my name is Arthur Paganini. I'm, uh, here representing PSL from Champaign-Urbana. Um, I'm a resident of Ward Four, and I'm here to support people who, uh, who've been speaking about like what this community needs in terms of investment in the community. Um, and specifically, I want to support what Eddie Pratt Jr. said about the SWIFT program. So what we have here, in my opinion, is a unique opportunity um, for positive systemic change, like within this community. Um, and like I know that the word systemic change have become kind of a buzzword um, in politics recently, uh, but it sounds like no one knows what that means or what that act, what we actually need to do about it. Um, and in my opinion, education is the best form of systemic change or the best way to start systemic change. Um, as a student myself, uh, I know what kinds of doors education opens for me. Um, and not just for me, but, uh, for my future family, anyone that, uh, benefits from me having that education. Um, and I, I think, and what a lot of people think, rightly so, is that what the community needs is investment in them, not against them. Um, I was at the city council meeting two weeks ago, uh, when you guys were talking about the, um, the budget, and you guys patted yourselves on the back for the city's sound financial condition. Um, and that's great, like I'm happy, and I'm glad that you're all doing your jobs well. Um, but I think it's time to put that money, uh, back into the community and not into more police, more SROs. Um, I'm just wondering what that's gonna help. What's that gonna, what is that gonna do for the community? I think honestly, it's time for the, for the money that the, that Urbana City Council or the Urbana government made uh, last year and put it back into the community that got that money to you in the first place. Um, I think the best way to do this is to fund the SWIFT program, match that one million dollars. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, next speaker is Brandy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brandy. I'm a minor Urbana resident. Uh, first off, I want to thank the majority of the Urbana aldermen who signed on to the letter to legislators to lift the ban on rent control. Uh, while the, while the letter did not have the desired result, it helped show legislators that the ban on rent control is uh, more than a metropolitan issue. Um, now, last year, to get to the meat, last year, we allocated the police department eleven-point-four million dollars, which was three, thirty-two-point-seven percent of our operating fund. Of that, based on the proposed budget, eight-point-seven million of that was actually dispersed, which is three percent less than budgeted. So this year, we're proposing to give a total of twelve-point-one million. If they didn't need the full eleven million we budgeted last year, why do we need twelve million this year? I understand our operating fund expenditures are higher this year, so that does amount to a lesser percentage of the total operating fund, but in dollars and cents, we're providing more measurable resources to police. I'm confused. We don't have an overnight shelter in Urbana. There are people sleeping on the streets with nowhere to turn. We, we can spend the money elsewhere. I mean, I feel like that's kind of the consensus here. You might think of gun violence as a reason we need police in our communities, but the gun violence continues with the police in our communities. So how long do we give them till we acknowledge that they aren't treating the root cause of crime? Defund the police. They aren't the answer. We need to do everything in our power to help those who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, um, Nico Johnson Fuller.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, my name is Nico. I'm a student, uh, at UIC and I'm, uh, the co-chair of the Young DSA Group, uh, at UIC. And I just wanted to echo what other people have been saying about additional funding for the SWIFT program, uh, matching that one million from Urbana and Champaign. Uh, and, you know, continue the discussion about how, uh, the real solutions, uh, can be met or can be, yeah, brought forward, and these solutions involve investing in the community and investing in programs like the SWIFT program rather than investing in carceral solutions, which put more people in jail or arrest more people but don't fundamentally, uh, change and prevent uh, the crime and other gun violence and other, uh, things which are harming the community. And I've, you know, from my own experience and those I know, I, I, I know, seen the impact, um, of poverty and know that, you know, programs like SWIFT program are a great way to help people, uh, find more stability and in many ways strengthen the community, and I would encourage you to invest more in, uh, programs like these. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next speaker is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. My comment after seeing the budget is that, um, without focusing on efficacy and the city's general attitude on accountability, spending additional money in certain areas such as police training and equity training, um, does not guarantee any improvement. Um, in fact, it might actually make things worse. Um, a specific example would be the twenty-five thousand dollars suggested for hu- for the, um, human rights and equity officers, um, training. I would suggest that before any money is thrown at solving problems, the city take a look at its actions. For example, after the job discrimination hearing, how city administrator Carol Mitten basically vetoed the board's decision? Or how at the CPRB meeting where, um, Carol Mitten did not allow members to vote again for a TASER review case, even though nearly all of the evidence was suppressed by the Urbana Police Department during the original review. And in the last CPRB meeting, Carol Mitten decided not to accept the police complaint. She said that as acting human rights and equity officer, it was her right to make that decision, even if she were to move forward without the backing of CPRB members. She argued, she will argue that the complainant should, that the complaint shouldn't be denied because it was late. Um, but I urge you all to, uh, please review the meeting recording and hear the point of residents to why her decision was a step backward in rebuilding public trust in the police review process and trust in the police itself. With this type of mindset from one of the top city leaders, will twenty-five thousand dollars of training for the newly appointed HRE will change anything? Please think about it. Another example is the proposed thirty-five thousand dollars of the coming fiscal year's budget, which will be, which is proposed to be allocated to additional training in the police department um, related to de-escalate, de-escalation and crisis intervention strategies. Again, will this work? Is this for more training from the Police Training Institute led by, um, Michael Schlosser? Um, as history has shown us, uh, training at the PTI does not seem very effective. Um, according to Mr. Schlosser, in a presentation and discussion, he claimed with pride how he trains at the Police Training Institute and describes how impressed others are with the training. When discussing police excessive force and police, um, violence, he denied things, um, he denied that these things happen in our town as our trainees are so well-trained in de-escalation. So he's either so out of touch, refuses to see the truth, or is just lying to promote the good image of the police. How is spending that much money on training going to help if the leader of the Police Training Institute has that kind of posture? What we actually need is accountability. Accountability when police leadership, like Deputy Chief Sales, lies to CPRB to suppress evidence. When we see police officers using racist and sexist language. When police officers mock the public for being concerned. When police officers lie on reports and do not follow policies and ordinances. This is where we need accountability. You have received, um, plenty of input from other residents on how money can be used to help the people, how to actually invest in the community, um, and as well as ideas how to seed systemic change. Um, so with close to sixty thousand dollars of taxpayer money proposed to be allocated for training, um, police training, maybe we should take a step back and think critically. Decide if the proposed allocated funds is just money going down the drain, especially if see the city leadership does not change its posture on accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else wish to participate in this hearing? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Do we have any time for a question? Uh, this is to get input on, this is the public hearing part of the budget. So the questions would be in the discussion next week or, um, in the discussion next week on the budget. Uh, seeing no further input in this hearing.
You do, someone just raised their hand, mayor.
Oh, they did? Okay, thank you. Uh, Catherine Majewski.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I just wanted to, I guess, quickly also chime in and express my support for the one million dollars of funding for the SWIFT program. I do think that this is a useful way to, for the community to invest in proactive solutions rather than reactively trying to respond social issues that have been created by a lack of investment in the community's well-being. Um, I also wanted to mirror Tracy's input on police funding and express my concerns about, let me find it here, the, um, still allocating the officer to intervene in behavioral crises. I do not believe that police officers are necessary or safe in, under these circumstances. I think there is substantial evidence that they tend to escalate the situation. Um, I will go ahead and pass off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else wish to participate in this hearing? Okay, well, at this point, I will, uh, declare this hearing closed and we will adjourn. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move on to the special meeting of the Urbana City Council when the clerk gives us the sign. Okay. Thank you, Phyllis. So I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry. Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Ms. Wilkins.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next up is public input. Does anyone wish to address this special meeting of the Urbana City Council? I see one hand, Evelyn Underwood, Dr. Underwood. Dr. Underwood, did you wish to speak? You're muted if you do.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are now. We can hear you.
Yes, as I forestated, because of, uh, emergency, I was late getting on. And I was gonna speak to the other issue, but you're saying that we have to speak to that issue next week.
You can speak to whatever you want to during this four-minute period.
Oh, do it, you mean I have four minutes during this period?
Yes, you do.
Uh, to speak. Okay, I'm kinda out of breath. Um, I have several things that I wanted to talk about. Um, uh, and I'm sorry I didn't get an opportunity to hear what the other individual had to say. But I believe, uh, I'm not far befunding the police, but I'm for taking some of that money to utilize, uh, for mental health assistance and the like. Um, additionally, um, uh, I'm understanding in checking, in talking with people in other parts of the country. I know we're different in Urbana. I'm not trying to change just to anyone else, but I know that there are a lot of individuals getting, uh, changing the curriculum for the training. Uh, I know, uh, we go through, uh, the institute out there, and, uh, I haven't actually been through it myself, but I've talked to people who have, and I've seen information, and I think it would be a good idea to, um, look, take a look at the curriculum, uh, for training and see what needs to be changed. Uh, even the best of things, which I'm not saying it is, uh, uh, we need to sometimes take a look at it. But given what's going on in, uh, the country, um, in our community, uh, we need to take a look, uh, at maybe the curriculum for training. And, um, as I say, I'm not defunding, but we need to reallocate some of the funds for, um, uh, 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 for other areas. The police cannot do everything. I think I mentioned that when we were talking about the SROs. Um, uh, they are not counselors. They do a good job in what they do. It was a presentation made the other night on the Zoom just this past week, uh, uh, on some things, uh, which, uh, uh, I'm not able to do a lot like I used to do, but there are people who are well-able to take a look at what's going on and see what needs to be changed and bring it to the body. Um, and the intelligent people, this is the University of Illinois. We got all kind of people here. The premier university, and seemingly, they're not doing what they need to do. I was on a Zoom two or three weeks ago, um, where the sys- systems person was talking about, uh, uh, what they were doing in the money's allocations through the universities and what's going on, uh, in, uh, Chicago. And, uh, but some of that needs to be going on here. Assist the police, assist what's going on with these young people, uh, this shooting and all of that. We not, can't be blind to that. We cannot be blinded. People are afraid. And we shouldn't be fearful of the police, and we shouldn't be fearful of our children. Something got to give, city council people. Some, we got to look at reallocating. That's some intelligent people, more intelligent than I ever be. But I can pray that they make the right decision and try to come up with something to change. And before my time run out, I don't know if the city council gonna start meeting, um, uh, in person, since Champaign is meeting in person. But right now, if one has to go over there to the council, I mean, to the building, you got to call in. And then they got to come out and help you. I'm handicapped. There was not a chair or anything for me to sit. Somebody had to take me because I can't drive. We need to, uh, uh, take a look at what we do and how we, uh, don't think about people. We need to take a look at what we do and how we don't think about people who have handicapping conditions. We come to the city, the building and, and for important information, important thing, and there's not a chair out there for us to sit. I'm on a walker and there might be other people on a cane or something. Please take a look at that. And I'm, my time might be almost up, but I'm gonna stop with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's a hand up. That's a phone number ending in 277.
And they've been unmuted, so now, yep, looks like they got it, star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Katie Muir. I'm sure you know who I am. I have sent a myriad of emails to you starting when I received a displacement letter posted to my door at 206 East California Avenue, number four. I am listening to this meeting and I am astounded. I am astounded that citizens of Urbana are yelling at the wind. I am astounded that we have a city council that is reactive instead of proactive. We have just gotten another letter from Danielle Chatawitz Cunningham Township blaming the previous owners who sold this apartment building. Blaming everybody except taking some personal responsibility. You call in for maintenance, she blames her maintenance people. She blames the people citywide for not emptying the dumpster. She blames somebody for not cutting the grass. Cunningham Township was in no way prepared to become a property manager, much less someone helping make a transition of displaced people. I have emails continually questioning her. Do you have our rental files? Are you in a position to even give us a rental reference? No answer. No answer, no answer, no answer. And continual letters saying we are refusing to cooperate. And I am so angry, I didn't want to call in here because I'm like, this is unbelievable. There's hundreds of thousands of COVID-19 emergency solution grants. There's money to help these problems. Why isn't anyone doing anything? Why are we left out here yelling at the wind to people who just sit there and go out this hundreds of thousands of money to solve these problems with no oversight, zero oversight? And you have citizens pleading for your help, pleading you. They're going to become homeless. They are homeless. Those, those stressors, it's COVID-19. You want to pretend COVID-19 is over, you're gonna open up the city council, but yet you, you don't mind taking the COVID-19 grants? So why do you think people are so confused right now? I, I just can't even believe this is all going on. I was never involved in politics, ever. Listen, I didn't even know who was on the city council. I didn't even know there was a Cunningham Township Board. And, and I keep trying to get answers and I get these responses that are nothing but insulting. And we're all trying to get answers and nobody will help us.
Thank you. Next up is Haki.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Drecker Haki, recent graduate of the University of Illinois. Now I grad students in the master's of public health program. I didn't come prepared. I usually don't. But the person before me moved me in such a way that I have to speak on homelessness and whatnot. And I wonder if that, I heard that side, but it's okay. I'm not, I'm gonna ignore that. We know that the violence has increased drastically in Champaign. And it's not due to, it's not because of a culture of poverty that white America likes to parade around. It is the material conditions of our people, it is a material conditions of society that allow for violence. When we're talking about material conditions, we're talking about housing, we're talking about food, we're talking about security, we're talking about education, we're talking about so much more than just a tax income break or how much money you make. There's so much more. As Dr. Underwood stated, transportation, the lack of transportation plays a major role in the structural violence that the system of white supremacy has perpetuated. There's a lot to be done. It is very, very unfortunate that the caller before me clearly pointed out that we are moving in a direction as if Urbana and Champaign, as if the world has moved past COVID-19 pandemic. But you all are still taking funds regarding COVID-19, but not actively redistributing those funds regarding COVID-19 to the people that are in dire need of those funds. I believe, again, I try to give you all the benefit of the doubt and try not to believe that there are insidious ways. But I know that individuals and institutions operate interdependently. You all work together, it works at the same time, but you all work by itself as well. I hope that especially the new members of Urbana City Council will work to ensure that these funds are distributed, that the wealth is redistributed to the people, especially when in regards to housing. Champaign County only has a document of 142 to 150 homeless individuals. There are school, there are apartment buildings for U of I students, the privilege, that sit empty. Latitude can possibly fit the entire homeless population here. You are lucky we are not like white folks and will not commit a January 6th and run up homeless people into these apartment complexes and actively house them and feed them, even though that is something I would love to do. Yeah, they do it, they're doing it in other areas of the country. They're doing it in Oakland. But it's crazy, white folks can run up in Capitol Hill, the seat of this white hair and bulk democracy, leave unscathed. And we still have homeless people out in the streets and white, white people are homeless too. So we all in the same boat, but we only got one person rolling, black folks rolling. Been black folks been rolling, been at the vanguard of the revolution since 1619, since 1492 here in, in the Americas and the Western Hemisphere. So please, 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 I'm tired of begging. I'm not even gonna beg no more. We don't take the power because that's what it is, it's about people's power. Either you stand on the side of history, on the, you know, history in terms of the people, of those who are the oppressed, or you continue to stand on the side of the oppressor. As Dr. King, not the whitewashed version, said, the urgency of now. It is now time, more than ever, to actively fight against the systems of racism, homophobia, heteronormativity, capitalism, imperialism, colonialism. Homelessness is a product of systemic oppression. It is a product of structural violence and structural racism. And I end with this, black women, single mothers with children who are fighting, who are actively fleeing from domestic violence and LGBTQ identifying youth are the two growing populations. Look at that structural violence and structural racism for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alan Max Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All righty, so my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I am the campaign lead of No Amish Shut Offs Zero Dollar All Volunteer Grassroots Coalition of 48 member organizations in counting Spain, the state of Illinois, North and Southeast and West. We have won Forest and Utility Shut Off Moratroya so far. And we have won an open-ended utility disconnection avoidance program that has spent over $115 million to help over 115,000 households keep their utilities on. This has resulted in this past week being the best week in terms of the lowness of our coronavirus cases since March of last year. Despite the efforts that we had done, there were efforts to subvert it. And I know a lot of people have uncomfortable feelings because they may not have understood pandemic policy. I'm not actually referring to that. I'm referring to, of course, one of the reasons why we had a summit this past Saturday for something we will later call a progressive accord. We're victims of psychological abuse by the state, our revolution board member, by the chair of our revolution downstate, Georgia De La Garza, who used misinformation in our community, which is largely responsible for the QAnon conspiracy theory circulated by Danielle Chatawitz and Carol Ammons. Her victims were provided testimony in front of many others for the first time ever being heard. These folks have been isolated. They had had their trust weaponized against them. They have specific traumas in connection to how they have been treated. And when we brought attention to this community of some of the professional misconduct of people acting in league with Georgia De La Garza, knowing that she was subverting democratic processes like Danielle Chatawitz, who was a former boss of mine, who knows my communication information. And yet, there was some very subtle misdirection of communication that was later weaponized, that is likely attributable to her, that occurred right after I had given Georgia De La Garza her phone number. It is time for you to believe people. When folks are saying that they are not being heard, I don't know the specific situation of the tenants at this property, but I know Danielle. And the thing about people who are manipulative and insufficiently helped by therapy is that they will seem like the nicest people in the world when we talk to people about Georgia De La Garza and they don't know about the victims. Over two dozen testimonials were presented. And this is something that has become a statewide structural issue that is being recognized against the attempts of progressive branded people. That is wrong. So while these folks are talking about their issues with their housing stability, I urge you to listen to them. Yes, this is not the township board meeting, as Danielle had brought up at a past public comment. That is irrelevant. You are public servants. This is a space for you to be heard. And in general, comment indicator, there is a person who literally gives public comments on inane things because it is his right and duty. And people who say that you should not be giving those kinds of comments in this space are derelict at best in their understanding of people's rights in this community. And how they protect themselves is none of their business. It is time for Champaign-Urbana to be a place that supports survivors of all kinds of abuse. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Bo David Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you. I'm Bo Barber. I don't live in Urbana. I'm out in Ogden. But I go to university, PhD student. And this is the Champaign-Urbana metro area. So what kind of goes on here also kind of concerns me is, you know, it concerns me meant like, I'm concerned about what's going on here. The one thing I just kind of wanted to say was with opening up all this stuff and kind of lessening of COVID protections is that, you know, people, people still get sick. There's still people that aren't vaccinated, although CU PhD and activists like Hitting Homeboy have, organizations like Hitting Homeboy have like done a lot to help people get vaccinated. And, you know, but the virus is still out and it's all across the state and people are traveling. One of the people who got COVID is my soon-to-be two-year-old niece, Lily, otherwise affectionately known as Lily Junebug. She's doing fine, but she got it when she was at daycare. And she's doing good. Her parents are both doing good. They were both fully vaccinated. And it was kind of surprising though, because they ended up getting symptoms. My sister's husband kind of got, had like a bad cold, lost a little bit of like his taste and smell. Wasn't too bad. My sister, though, described it as like the worst cold of her life and it kind of just knocked her on her butt for like the whole week. And she's still sort of like recovering. She's doing better now, thank God, both, all three of them are. But it's, you know, like it's, she ended up testing negative, which I find surprising because she had loss of taste, loss of smell temporarily. I don't, I don't know. Who knows what's going on? But the thing is, is that people still get it. Two-year-olds can get it. And there's still not a conclusive thing of what the long-term effects are for children and for anybody in general, but also it just sort of like, it's my two-year-old niece. She's, she's absolutely, she's a beautiful young baby and just, or toddler now. And, you know, I just, it, it worries me. So, I mean, you know, Lily, they live up in Northern Illinois. They're not residents of Urbana, but I'm sure there's a lot of two-year-olds up there who are just as precious as to me as to others, as Lily is, as my niece Lily is to me. But, you know, I just, with the decisions that you're making, I, you know, you're gonna do what you're gonna do. I'm just some podunk kid out in the boondocks of the county. But just, I just thought it might be a good reminder of just being conscious of what decisions you're making in regard to COVID policy. And I don't know, it is what it is, I guess. But on, on the topic of also being conscious about like decisions you make, it's important to, it's important to address systems. And I don't want to just kind of sound like a broken record, seeming like I'm repeating what everyone else is saying. But like, if you try and address the problems of violence with just police, it kind of like you're trying to put, in my mind, a Band-Aid on a burn wound on somebody who's still trapped in a bonfire? Or somebody that fell into a bonfire? I've seen people have that before. Oh, God, you don't know what that happened. Putting a Band-Aid on that's not gonna solve the problem. And it's also like, it's a reactionary thing that we're doing here. Maybe we could put up some guards around the bonfire. Or maybe we could keep, you know, maybe we could keep Tim or whoever's getting drunk at the bonfire away from the bonfire. So instead of giving funds to the police, maybe we can invest in things like Courage Connections. Because I'm like, I don't know, like the one speaker pointed out earlier, the police didn't even use up all that money. I mean, just like doing the math on this, y'all, I don't know. I'm frustrated. Y'all have a good, y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hi again. Am I coming through clear?
Yes.
My name is Eddie Pratt Jr. I am an Urbana resident. I am the creator of the CU Human Rights Coalition. And I'm also a member of the CU DSA. I hope what you heard tonight keeps you awake. I hope that what you heard tonight gives you just a, a little sliver of what millions of people across this country are feeling right now. What people in this very community are feeling right now. The feeling of walls closing in. The feeling of not being able to get help where you're told you're supposed to be able to get help from. We heard that situation tonight. We've heard of the system failing people, of falling through the cracks. I am one of those people. Gun violence is something that was a part of my entire childhood, growing up in Detroit in the 90s. It is a terror that I don't wish on my worst enemy. To grow up at war is not something that anyone should ever have to experience, yet millions are. I hope that it makes your morning coffee a little, a little bit more bitter. And that you decide to use your platform. and that you decide to use your platform to invoke change, positive change, substantial change, long-lasting change. Equity, justice, these things are all woven into this moment. You've heard more than a dozen people take time out of their day to talk to you, to tell you that the community needs things. You have the opportunity to provide it. So it's my hope that you will join us who are out here, who are hurting, who want a better community for everyone here, who doesn't want to relive trauma over and over. That you are willing to invest in that, that you are willing to partner with the community in that, that you are your brothers and your sisters' keepers. Anything short is quite honestly the complete opposite. When history is written on these days, what will it tell about you? That you upheld the same patriarchal capitalistic system that begets this very suffering that we are all subject to in our community right now? Or that you took a stand, that you saw an opportunity and you used everything that you could for the betterment of the people around you? I hope that that stays on your mind, because it stays on mine. So, good night.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't I didn't have further to say this week.
Okay. Let me check the list. It looks like everyone who wished to speak has spoken. Does anyone else want to address the special meeting of the Urbana City Council? Okay, then we'll move on. Normally on the council agenda, there's, this would be the point where we have council input and communication. And I think we should go ahead and do that. It's not, it's not listed on the agenda, but that's where it should go. So if it's okay with you, is there anybody on the council who wanted to provide input or communication at this point? Sharice?
I guess I, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I guess what I want to, want to say is that I, I hear what everybody's saying. And particularly regarding the, the gun violence that seems to perpetuate throughout, at least by my ward or close to it, because it's in Champaign, which is two blocks over. And what I want to say as well is I was listening to Linda Turnbull and Eddie Pratt Jr., Reverend Underwood. I really am bewildered as to how or to what, what the, some of the first steps could be. Cameras, what Linda was saying, is a great idea. I agree. And I, I know because cameras don't lie and if, if there's a camera that is in our, in our neighborhood, that is a city, a city-owned thing that way, we have the surveillance that's needed for a lot of these issues. The other thing I wanted to say is that, yeah, people are scared. And no one should be afraid to walk down the street of their own neighborhood, especially when they've lived in this neighborhood for 60 years. No one should be afraid to walk down the street. I've been approached by a couple of police officers that want to organize a neighborhood watch. And I would very much like to hear, I've, I've put out what I could on, on, on the War Three Warriors page to try to get anyone that's interested. I think that the more that we take, that we participate in, in surveilling, not necessarily surveilling, but in protecting ourselves, the, the less likely that we will endure or have to endure this kind of violence that's been going on lately. And if anyone is interested in doing that, and, and Linda, if you're still on, on, I hope you can pass the word better than I can. Give me a call because we are interested in trying to get some kind of neighborhood watch going. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Does anyone else want to speak? Jay?
I think Mary Alice had her hand up first.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment and really it's actually a question for the mayor. So people have talked about the, the COVID funds that are coming to the city, approximately $12 million. And we haven't had a conversation yet. That $12 million is not included in this budget that we've been talking about. So is the plan to have a conversation with, with internal, with the council and the public in July? Do you have a rough estimate in terms of when that conversation will happen?
Yeah, I was going to give an update during the staff report, but I can do it now. Actually, the six, about six and a half million is included in this year's budget and it's going to be set aside. It is set aside in the special fund. We received word over the weekend that the money had been transferred from the treasury. So we have received $6,487,280. So that is now in our account. We're going to be, we want to hold some facilitated discussions with city council and the community this summer to discuss how you want to allocate these funds. But the good news is the money is now in our account. So the, what we also received word from the US Council Conference of Mayors is that there are members of Congress who now want to claw back the second part of the distribution, the second $6.5 million in our case, and put that money toward the infrastructure bill. So there's some fighting going on in Congress now about the second distribution of the ARC money. But at this point, most cities either have already received their first allocation or should be able to get it. So yes, we expect to do the facilitated, facilitated discussions, hopefully starting in July. But again, as I pointed out, we have time. You know, you don't have to spend the money all this, you don't have to allocate it all this, you don't have to spend it all at once or all this year. So we have time to be thoughtful about how you want to spend it and make sure we're putting it toward a use that'll have the biggest, you know, the most effect. Got any question? Okay. Jay?
I just wanted to hop on briefly and acknowledge the, the pain that folks have been expressing. I know it's not easy to continue to come back and have these conversations. This is a time where we are still figuring out. I'm glad to hear that we've gotten that first portion of the funding. I'm excited to see the work that's happening in our community around gun violence and look forward to hearing more. I know that that's something that was mentioned, that there's an interest in coming before the council to talk more about some of those community efforts, but just wanted to, to, as always, thank our public comments for, for continuing to show up, continuing to talk to us and to recognize that there is a lot of pain and a lot of fear in our community that I know that we're dedicated to addressing, but that it's, it's a process. And I just can encourage you all to continue to reach out in whatever way it feels right to you, whether it's email, whether it's public comment, however you feel right, connecting with us. It's appreciated.
Okay, James and then Chandra.
I think Chandra was next.
Okay. I don't, I don't, where's Chandra?
Hi.
There you are. Okay, Kai.
So along with Jay, I wanted to thank everyone for their input. I want to know that, want everyone to know that we heard you, at least I did. I hear that you're saying that police officers don't necessarily result in safer communities. I hear that we need more amenities to deter criminal behavior. Funding should be directed to mental health, affordable housing. I heard homeless shelters, schools, and that does not include SROs and prevention and support programs. So I, I just want to know, I heard you, and I think that the budget should reflect those priorities as well. So I will be working with the rest of the city council and the city to make sure that those priorities are funded as they should be. Thank you.
James?
Yes, and thanks. I do, I do appreciate the public coming out and talking. I wish we would see more public comment. I, I think we need to see the, the whole of Urbana represented in our citizens coming out and sharing what they, what they would like to see, what their vision is for our community. I did want to mention that, I mentioned this before, but a little more details. The Silverheart Silverwood neighborhood is celebrating its fifth anniversary this Saturday, June 12th. And it's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. The celebration is going to be on Vodder Street between Silver and Mitchum. And there's some more, more details coming, but I hope people in Ward Seven and other parts of Urbana can come out and celebrate this neighborhood and the work they've done to, to focus on their needs. Thanks.
And Grace?
Wanted to also thank the public for your participation and staying so dedicated and vigilant in sharing your opinions and listening to all the meetings of council and the various commissions and just your involvement is definitely appreciated. I was wondering how and when this input will be incorporated into the budget? Because it seems like, I don't know, it seems like a little late in this process. I would love to see public input and council input earlier on. I know there was some meeting with us before, but it's kind of hard if we don't have something to look at. So maybe after comment, if you're willing to answer a question, I'm wondering how and when this would be incorporated into this year's budget from what we just heard from the public hearing, or if there are other avenues of public input that we have. Because we've heard a lot of people from the public and on council who want more community resources, support, education and prevention programs at the cost of money from police funding, because that is part of community safety from the same, you know, idea of the goal and funding. And I don't know that I see that truly reflected in the budget. I think that the $1 million to address structural inequity is a good start. But I don't know that that's good enough. I would love to see those structural inequity issues being addressed in just part of the systemic operations of the city and repairs, just part of standard planning. And then plus extra money on top of that for community resources and programming like the ARP or this Equity and Quality of Life project. But I'd love to see these overall ideas of addressing systemic inequity just being a part of what we do and not one extra step and kind of that's it. I'd love to see them both. And wondering how this public input will be incorporated into this year's budget in that timeframe.
The, just briefly, the most effective way to incorporate it into the budget this year is to focus on the ARC money, which is $6.5 million and the $2 million that the council has to allocate to the neighborhood infrastructure projects, which also can address some of the systemic inequities throughout the city. So that's, that's a total of about $8.5 million that you'll be having discussions about over the next year. That is a part of this year's budget. And then we also have an opportunity and I think an obligation to collaborate with fellow neighboring governments and other agencies that are receiving American Rescue Plan funding because, you know, the issues that affect Urbana affect our neighboring communities and countywide as well. So there's, there's some opportunities to leverage the funds that each entity is getting to really make some fundamental and more permanent changes. So there's a great deal of opportunity to have an impact on expenditures this year. Any other council member comments? Okay. The only items on the agenda for this special meeting are appointments to the Urbana Free Library Board. And those include reappointments of members Guadalupe Mejia, John Thies and Michael Weisman. They're all for terms ending June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion for approval and library director Celeste Shott is here if you have any questions? Sharice?
Yes, I'd like to move for the approval and reappointment of Guadalupe Mejia, John Thies and Michael Weisman.
Is there a second? I didn't hear who, what, who that was.
They said at the same time. Jinx.
All right, how about, was that Chandra? Chandra? Go ahead. All right. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
That motion passes. And the last item are the reappoint, is the reappointment for the Urbana Public Television Commission. And these are terms ending June 30th, 2024. One change here is that Carolyn Skip, who is a Urbana Free Library employee, who is the representative to the UPTV Commission, actually needs to be appointed by the Urbana Free Library Board first before you appoint her to the UPTV Commission. So the four people that you will be considering tonight are Peter Falk, Marie Polk, Mark Schultz and Dale Snyder. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move that we approve to the Urbana Public Television Commission, terms ending in June 30th, 2024, Peter Falk, Marie Polk, Mark Schultz and Dale Snyder.
A second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion?
Yeah, do we, the, Mayor, when you look at appointments, do you look at how long someone has served and have any thoughts about when it's time to give somebody else a shot at doing particular commission?
Sometimes, well, if it's, if there's term limits, absolutely. Generally though, the way the process has worked is we ask folks if they want to continue serving. And because, you know, we have so many seats to fill that we generally will, will accept their request to continue serving.
I would say that I would just like more information just about any decision that we're asked to make. You know, this is essentially just a list of names and, you know, we kind of have to do our own research or happen to know people. And as much as I do understand that there are other people who know and trust them and have worked with them, it would still just be nice. As much as I do understand that there are other people who know and trust them and have worked with them, it would still just be nice to have a little blurb about. I don't know, maybe the people's like strengths and why they're interested in staying and what the commission is about, there's. Little online, I know generally of the, you know, public television, but I just think more information is always appreciated when we're expected to make a decision.
Typically, when a person is appointed for the first time, we do bring more information, but when they're reappointed, it's it's generally, you know. The this process that we're following here, you can always feel free to contact the staff members supporting the commission. In this case, it would be Jason Liggett and. For the UPTV Commission, if you needed information as well. Sharice.
I just wanted to say also. Grace, that Celeste Choat, who is the executive director for the Urbana Free Library is. In on this meeting, if you have any questions for her regarding the. The Urbana Free Library Board, feel free to, now's the time to ask. Having worked with the three people that we just reappointed. And John Thies is the president of of the board, he's doing an excellent job. Guadalupe represents the the library. Urbana Free Library in a capacity of. Regarding the Illinois libraries, I think. Celeste, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And Michael, more a lot more or less like myself. But the trustee board does is determine and. The budget for the library, not well, in some ways, but. We approve bills, we did a lot of things like what we do with the Cunningham Township Board. Celeste, you want to step in? You want to say anything, Celeste?
I, is there anything that you need from me?
We already voted on that.
Yeah, I know, but she wanted, she wanted information, so I just thought. Now's an opportunity for her to get information.
Yes, I appreciate that. Any information is definitely helpful, but with this one we're looking at right now with. Public Television Commission, I don't know if there's is a representative with a kind of quick.
Jason Liggett could answer those questions.
Yeah, absolutely, Grace, I am the staff representative for the UPTV Commission, so happy to answer any questions that you have. About the commissioners up for reappointment.
I guess just wondering what the how the commission is involved in general too, like. I know there's a lot of staff also that do the day to day work, like are they advising on programming and scheduling, kind of the roles of the commission? And maybe your insight to the reappointments, if you have any.
Yeah, so currently UPTV has one full time staff member and that is me, the station manager. And then we have an eighteen hour a week production assistant, Breama Rodrigo. Works Thursday, Friday and Saturday from ten to four, does a number of production tasks both for the city. And also helping our public access members produce public access television. And then we have three part time camera operators, as you know, we have many boards and commissions in the evening hours and I'm not here every evening, so. We have three part time camera operators that'll work on an as needed basis for those meetings. As far as the commission's concerned, the makeup of the commission is we have one representative from the Urbana Free Library. One representative from the Urbana School District, one representative. From the Urbana Park District and then we have. At large Urbana residents that are members as well. For the commission's members that are for reappointment, the chair of the commission is Peter Folk. Peter Folk owns and operates Volo Broadband, a. Technology company in town and internet provider in town. He's been the chair of the commission, I want to say since, I know it's since Barbara Goddney, longtime chair stepped down, and I believe that was 2014. And he was started on the commission in 2012 or 2013, I don't have the exact dates. Carol Enskeep is the current Urbana Free Library Board Representative, as the mayor mentioned, she's not up for reappointment. Marie Polk is the UPTV membership, so that's one of the other representatives I failed to mention is that the actual producers and public access members have a representative on the board. Marie Polk has been in that position, I want to say for a better part of a decade, maybe a little over a decade now. She produced a show called See You Mommy Connection on Urbana Public Television, she had both in studio experience, so she. Had the experience of being at UPTV and working with our staff, but then she also had in the field. Production experience to where she would loan to, you know, take the cameras out of UPTV. And have family or friends or, you know, other UPTV members film for her on location shoots. Mark Schultz is the current representative for the Urbana Park District. And then Dale Sender, this is a typo on here, it's not Snyder, Dale Sender was a past. UPTV member, he's produced a number of music concerts during his membership on the board. And then also is has a vast technology. Background, and that's why he's on the board. I'll also note, in in addition to the folks that you see before you, Chris Fuller, who. Works with technology at Urbana Middle School is also on the board representing the Urbana School District, he's not up for appointment right now. And then we currently have two vacancies on the board that are at larger banner residents, so if anyone in Urbana is interested in public access television or media or technology. And you or any of the other council members or any of the public watching. Know someone that would be interested or interested yourselves, you can always contact the mayor's office. About applying to be on that commission. The the general task of the commission, if you ever go back and watch the meetings, they they get a lot of staff reports. There's any updates from the FCC, we kept them abreast of the Comcast franchise renewal that we recently renegotiated in January. And then other things, if there's ever any programming complaint, sometimes with public access television. You know, you get a bunch of different viewpoints and those aren't always popular viewpoints, so they might hear complaints. It was semi regularly in the early 2000s, our last significant programming complaint was in 2008. And they they had a lot of meetings during that time, they do meet quarterly, I would say we meet, you know. Two to two to four times a year, just because if there's not any pressing business, we don't always call call a meeting for that.
Thank you so much for the information and for what you guys do and helping make it accessible.
Yeah, absolutely, happy to help.
Thanks. Go ahead, James.
Mayor Marlin, do you require a paper application for the board seats?
We do online.
Okay, but it is that there are a set number of things that people have to fill out to.
Yes.
Be considered, I I can tell you, I I'm not going to do this very often, but I will tell you. In the in the county board, same kind of process, people apply for. Sanitary districts, mental health board, all all kinds of positions. Those applications are shared in the packet. With the appointment so that the basic information. That someone has supplied with regard to their interest and their qualifications for the. For the board are available, and I think I think that would have gone a long way. For for new council members to have some context of who individuals are and what their. What their qualifications are, what their interest is.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can do that for. New applicants, we don't require returning applicants to, you know, fill out an application again and sometimes. And and I'm not sure we have the applications from 10 years ago or that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I and I do understand that it is a, it's an executive appointment, you you are evaluating the applicants and. Selecting them and asking for our approval of that. But I I do, I I would be one that would ask. If someone's serving a three year term and they're trying to. Be reup for the three year term, I do think they need to to. To apply again, I do think they need to. You know, reinvest in in the next term.
And I, okay. I hear what you're saying. The other thing is is that the the depending on the board and commission, the staff support for that commission also. They're they're really the first line to evaluate the applications to make sure people are qualified to serve. On that particular board and commission, and then they make a recommendation to me, so. So I I depend on the staff. In the department level, supporting those boards and commissions to make a recommendation.
Do we have a list of qualifications for those for those seats depending on the board?
It depends on the board, you know, or the, it depends on the, these are all citizens, these are all volunteers. And sometimes each board may have. As you heard with the UPTV Commission, they have to have a representative from a number of different agencies. With the Farmers Market Advisory Board, there are specific areas with the Arts Commission, I believe there are some specific areas, so it depends on the, it depends on the board. But as far as specific qualifications, typically not. You know, these are volunteer advisory positions.
I think when I was appointed to the Urbana Free Library Board, the only qualification I had was living in Urbana at the time.
That's a basic.
And showing interest in in being appointed to the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's a basic qualification, but these are voluntary, these are non paid. You know, resident. Boards and commissions advisory to the council and to the mayor, so. Okay. That that we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miss Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. With no further business before this special meeting, we stand adjourned and we'll move on to the committee of the whole.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order, will the clerk please call the roll? It is eight forty two.
Miss Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, the first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, May 17th, 2021. Is there a motion for approval?
Actually, the minutes for May 17th were not.
Oh, they weren't included.
So, yeah, they're not included, but you will get them very soon.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to item number three. I received two emails additions for agenda. Are there additions to the agenda, please? Let me know so that I can. Okay, Chandra.
Yes, I would like to add. Discussion of. Council priorities to the agenda, or at least discussion as to when we could have a discussion about. Council priorities, setting those goals.
Okay. Grace, did you, you had something to say also?
Oh, no, I'll second.
Oh, it's a, it's just adding, I don't think we have to vote on it, do we?
Oh, I didn't know if you needed a second for adding a discussion item.
Okay, so.
Never mind.
You, it was just Chandra then?
Yes.
Okay. So. Maybe. At, I was gonna say after council input. Mayor Marlin, did you have one to say something?
I had another addition.
Okay, go ahead.
Staff report after public input and presentations.
Okay.
Just a very brief one.
And Chandra. Maybe we can have that discussion during council input and communications?
Yes, that will be fine. Thank you.
So I'll just add that on there. Okay, we have a public input in. Presentations, we have three presentations tonight. Number one is Urbana Free Library. Regarding the budget review for FY 2021 and 22. B is capital improvements plan. And C is our public input, so. Celeste Choat is here to discuss the budget review, Celeste.
Thank you very much, everyone. And Jason's going to put the brief presentation I have up on the screen for us. Thanks, Jason. So I'll talk briefly about the Urbana Free Library Fiscal 22 Budget Presentation, Budget, which is in the city's budget. Just as a quick overview, can you go back to the main screen? There we go, thanks. So in the 2020 calendar year, although we had COVID and we're close, we had COVID, we all had COVID and we were closed a couple of months. Patrons still checked out over 428,000 physical items. Our circulation of electronic items like ebooks, e audiobooks, music and movies. Was up eighty seven percent, so a significant increase of almost eighty eight thousand items. A hundred and twenty three thousand five hundred people visited the library and staff answered. Almost twenty nine thousand reference questions. We added a new service called curbside delivery service. And we had eight thousand six hundred fifty two people pick up their items curbside. And that's a service that we will continue to offer, it's been super popular. So just as we look at the things the library is doing, those are a couple of snapshots, we have a new infographic. That lays these things out, which I will email to you later tonight or tomorrow. Probably tomorrow, I think you're probably going to be all set by the end of tonight. So Jason, could you take me to the next slide? Here is a high level summary of the library revenue and expenses, we have three main categories. The eight oh twos are our general fund. The eight tens are our gifts that we have received, these are funds that stay with us like many bank accounts. For example, donors have given us money for the fairy tale ball that we have every year. The Friends of the Urbana Free Library host book sales and we sell their books at the library cafe. And that money stays in the eight tens as well, so this is money that we save and then spend as need be. On the different gifts that the donors have designated it for. Then we have the eight twenties, the eight twenties is the revenue and expenses involved with the. Property that the library owns, the Weber Building, which is at the southwest corner of Race Street and Green Street. So we have these three separate revenue and expense lines. You can see that we are going into our fund balances very purposely for a couple of different reasons. We plan to renovate the circulation area when we finish up. A building program project to learn more about what the community would like to see. We intend to move some of the DVD and CDs around to provide more spaces for people to be in the library. We might renovate the teen area as well, in part with donor money and with library money. We're going to repave the staff parking lot. And address some building envelope issues, and what you see there is a chiller being replaced a few years ago with funds from the foundation. We also are going to be having a couple of staff people, at least one staff person retire. And that would have us take funds from our retirement health savings. Fund to pay her into her self health savings program. We have some new revenue, this is very exciting, the library friends group has started an Amazon store and an Etsy store and is bringing in new revenue. So we are trying to be thoughtful about expenses. And revenue and look to the future to be sustainable as our strategic plan talks about. We didn't spend all of the money from the fund balance with different projects this year, like the friends have given us money to purchase new furniture for the front rooms. But not being open to the public, purchasing furniture for the front rooms was not our top priority. So that's something that we've rolled into the budget for next fiscal year and. The furniture, the comfy chairs are from when the library opened in 2005. And I believe every person that has used them is looking forward to some new furniture in the front room. So I will invite you to come visit the new furniture when it arrives. So if we go to the next slide, Jason. This is to show you that the vast majority of the library's revenue comes from property taxes. It's eighty three percent this year, it tends to run in that. It's eighty-three percent this year, it tends to run in that eighty, eighty-five percent. So what happens with property taxes is particularly important to our revenue. We work hard in those other areas, but property taxes dwarfs everything else. Next slide, Jason. So another area, our number two area of revenue is library fees. And that includes things like notary um, fees that we charge, people getting non-resident library cards. And of course fines, that's the biggest part of it. If you take a look at this, you can see that over about a ten-year period, the amount of fees has decreased. And these are, and this is in part because of the way people use the library has changed. For example, we saw an eighty-seven percent increase in use of the electronic items like eBooks. There are no fines and fees that come with eBooks. Um, they return themselves, and so by default, you can never have an overdue, which is great for patrons. We want people to use the library and not be afraid of getting fines, which is an impediment to service and a barrier. The library board has deliberately looked for ways to. Get rid of these barriers, so for example, they've increased the number of renewals on items and extended the amount of time that some collections check out for. We have increased the amount of fines that you can have before you get blocked from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars. And um, people are not sent to a collection agency for, oh, um, fees. Till a hundred dollars, it used to be forty or fifty. So we are looking for ways to serve our public well. And that means in part, le- less fines will come in because of decisions the board has made, as well as again, um, the changing use of the public. Next slide. And so you can see here, the, the blue is fines, and you can see over the years fines have decreased. So this is a trend that we're seeing at other libraries as well. Some libraries across the country, including Los Angeles Public, Chicago Public, Champaign Public, Normal Public Library. They are not charging fines at all in order to decrease barriers. So the Urbana Free Library still does charge fines, but starting May this year, we have started the auto renewal service. So that if your item can be renewed, because no one else has a hold on it and it hasn't hit its maximum number of renewals. The system will automatically renewal, sorry, automatically renew, which will bring in a little bit of fine money. But will mostly open up the use of the library in a way that makes people more comfortable. Okay, next slide. Here's expenses, I've got two slides that show expenses, this shows graphically where most of the money is spent. So you see that Adult and Youth Services, which has a large staff and purchases the materials that you check out, all the DVDs, telescopes. Sewing machines, books, DVDs and all those databases and downloadable um, items. Those are in Adult and Youth Services, which is gray. You'll see a dark blue sixty-five thousand line, that's the library cafe. The cafe has been closed during COVID, we will not reopen it until we know it will make money and make a profit. So that fund, those funds may or may not be spent this year, and that is um, neutral. So it is expenses and revenue are the same. So if we don't open it, that doesn't hurt the library, if we do open it, it's only because we know it won't hurt the library, it would only help. So the next slide shows percentages, so again, you can see that Adult and Youth Services is twenty-six percent of the total budget. Um, the next line is gonna be centralized cost, that's library health insurance, library insurance and things like that. We have increased our spending in a couple of different areas, including facilities, we need to catch up on some deferred maintenance, as well as hire a facilities manager. And that's gonna be an important part of keeping the building in a shape that's comfortable for, and safe for people to use. And that is my last slide. The library board has approved um, a couple of different versions of the budget, the most current one, I believe, is in your. In your packet with the budget, there is a small um, budget amendment coming in tomorrow night to the library board. We um, were told just recently that we can expect a greater PPRT payment, which is wonderful. And so we put the extra PPRT um, matching expenses in facilities, building, maintenance and repair. To match the ex- extra expense, sorry, revenue and expenses will match, and that's where the money went. Also, we expect to have some roofing issues uh, or otherwise dealt with the um, Weber Building. And so we are budgeting to spend the savings we've got for that building to address some building issues there. Otherwise, what the library board will approve, hopefully tomorrow night, is um, very much akin to what you've got in the budget.
Are there any questions for Celeste? Mary Alice?
Uh, Celeste, I appreciate uh, you and the board trying to figure out ways to remove barriers, uh, I think the electronic resources is great. I personally use them all the time. Um, I, I did, I haven't been able to see the budget, library budget, uh, I can't find it online and I also did not see it in my packet. Maybe it just got missed in my particular packet, I don't know if other people saw it?
No, we didn't get it in our packet this week, as far as.
So I'm wondering, um, just so that we have an opportunity to look over it, I'm wondering if perhaps we should. Move this to city council with no recommendation, and then Phyllis, maybe you can give us a copy of the budget? Cause I don't have any questions about the budget, cause I haven't seen it.
You didn't pick it up from my office?
I, I did pick it up from your office, but it's not in my packet.
It wouldn't be, cause you already have it.
Oh, you mean, you mean the big budget?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was sick last time and I didn't notice it was in the big budget, my, my bad.
Okay.
Also, just so, sorry, if I could, just to be very transparent, on our website, we have a page called Your Right to Know. And one of the links on Your Right to Know has a link to all the budget documents for the budgets going back several years. So if you're ever interested in where the library's budget is, that is a place that, that you as a citizen could check as well, citizen or a city council member.
Any other questions, Grace?
You, thanks for the presentation, and yeah, I appreciate what you guys are doing to reduce the fees to the public. Um, I was wondering if you could share a little bit more about the community engagement aspect and uh, teen hangout or cafe you mentioned?
Oh, a couple of different things, yes, thank you so much. The teen area in the library is quite tiny, there are two booths and just a couple of ranges of books for the teens. And um, on Mondays through Fridays after school, we do a teen open lab. And we're, we take over the auditorium and make it a maker space, homework space for the kids. And then we also were using space that was the quiet Glaston Study Room. So using a lot of the library's footprint to provide spaces for teens to come after school. So um, what we hope to do, once we hear more in the building program process about what's important to the, the board, the staff and the community. Is maybe carve out some more space now, the collection space isn't big enough and the physical space for the, the teens to be in is not large enough. So without an expansion, what can we do in the current building? Is something we're gonna take a look at, once we've got some feedback from people. So soon, we'll have information on community focus groups. And I will email you that, so you can share with your constituents, because we encourage people to register and participate in the focus groups. And we also have, um, tomorrow, we'll be putting up our website where people can uh, provide written feedback as well. Because some people don't care to participate in focus groups.
What's your participation for the teen area, is my understanding that that's expanded recently, it was smaller before the pandemic, like, do you have?
Oh, sorry.
Now?
Um, right now, the teen area is small and it, it physically still is small. And before the pandemic, we were expanding it just after, for after-school hours, we were ebbing and flowing and taking over, like, again, a quiet reading room. Which primarily was used by adults and having it be a teen space, glass doors, right up front by the cafe where there was food. And um, with the glass doors, it kept it quiet for other library users as well. So we, we're using the building to its capacity to give teens space, but we want them to have, buy their collection of items. More space as well. And I would be happy to give anyone a tour at any point in time as well, especially now that the building is more fully open.
Thank you. And with community engagement, um, I know you guys do a lot of like, educational campaigns, is that what a lot of the community engagement is focused on?
We do a lot of adult and youth, well, programming for all ages, and then we will be reaching out about the focus groups to get feedback in. So we do a lot of programming broadly, uh, different topics, but um, for this, we're gonna be specifically asking about how is the building working well for you? And what is it missing for you? Does that answer your question?
Um.
Not as much.
Thinking about the budget piece, you have a six percent of the budget for community engagement. And I was wondering, is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a department, it, sorry, um, we recently moved programming, which used to be an adult and youth service. Out of that and put it with development and promotion, because promoting programs goes a lot with engaging the public and coming to the programs. So um, that is a department that does our development and promotion, as well as all our programs now.
Thank you.
And it's new, so I'm sorry, I forgot the name from it, I, that's silly.
Um, I just wanna uh, add one, one more thing, Celeste, especially for the, the um, new members of the city council. Our strategic plan that we have uh, for the um, the library. It may, I think it would be a good idea if, if they all receive copies of that strategic plan. So that they can see how we uh, operate as far as uh. Uh, prioritizing and, and how we the, do, do the funding. And, you know, and how you actually do such good, a great, great job of operating the, the library.
Thank you, I'll make sure you all have a copy of that, and I should have said that first, because everything we do is geared towards meeting the pillars that the strategic plan um, has laid out.
Are there any more questions for uh, Celeste?
Yes, um, Celeste, is the Maker Space operating in, over the summer, on the same schedule?
They are doing it, they've been doing it online, and I believe we're looking to a fall, a fall launch for in-person programs in, in the building. That is what we're leaning towards, um. We're looking to see what happens with the state and such, but.
I was just gonna say, if you're gonna take a tour of how teens use the library, you definitely wanna do it. When they're in the auditorium and see what they're doing there, cause my son spent most of his middle school and some of his high school time in there. And it's a great resource.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Celeste.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate your, your time and support.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, um, we have a capital improvement plan presentation, and Will? And Carol?
Kick it off, um, and introduce uh, Will and Tim Cowan, who are going to present the twenty twenty-one Capital Improvement Plan. To you tonight, um, you know, we have been making great strides um, in. Making the CIP, which is what we um, affectionately call the Capital Improvement Plan, more accessible to uh, the general public. To increase its readability and transparency, and there's a, there's a lot of people and they're, they're listed um, in the, in the documents. Um, who, who assist on the technical side, both from public works and from finance. But the person who has really um, done the bulk of the work to, to, as I mentioned. Um, enhance the readability and transparency of the CIP is Will Kolchowski. So I just wanna acknowledge his hard work on that, um, two years ago. We were, um, the, the transition that we made um, last year was from a document that was focused on funds. And, and it was, it was very much from a, a user perspective on the technical side. And then last year, we shifted and spent a lot of time um, creating project pages. Which is the way the members of the general public think about it, and we, and in the presentation, we spent a lot of time talking about individual projects. This year, we're building on the foundation of all the master planning work that we've done. And, and this year, we're gonna spend the bulk of the presentation talking about asset classes. And how we invest in the replacement and maintenance of those asset classes. But um, I do wanna say too, there's a lot of slides, they were in your packet, and uh, don't expect that. And I'm reminding Will and Tim not to do this, they, they, they're gonna give you the, the headlines of, of some of those more detailed slides. But if you have questions um, tonight, um, we're happy to answer questions. And then um, next week, we have time set aside to do a deep dive in any of the projects that you would like us to. Um, you, you know, you can ask us about that tonight and tee it up, or you can contact us, um, you know, during the week and we'll be um, available to do that. But I, I also wanna just take an opportunity real quick, um, before we dive into the slides, um, to, to just talk about Vision Zero. Because we're getting some, um, you know, we're getting some questions about that. And I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about the city's support for Vision Zero. So although we don't have the re- the resources to devote, uh, uh, you know, an individual staff. Um, to a discreet effort by BPAC to pursue a set of Vision Zero initiatives. We, um, there isn't a project, uh, on the major streets, projects in the CIP, in the transportation um, project book. That doesn't advance safety, um, from a, you know, cyclist perspective or pedestrian perspective. And you'll see noted in there, and it's not for each and every one, but it's for most of them, where if, if there's, if the project is advancing a specific objective. Of the bicycle um, transportation plan, the pedestrian um, master plan. Or the um, what's called the Selected Crash Intersection Location, the SCIL report from twenty-eleven through twenty-fifteen. Which is the most recent, um, you, you know, they, that, that is how we, we, that's embedded in our work. It's not a separate thing, um, we, we pursue those objectives as a part of our work. So once all of the transportation projects that are included in the CIP over the next five years are completed. All the high crash locations that are identified in the SCIL report will have been addressed. And those are both, uh, that are in Urbana, cause that's a county-wide thing, and those are signalized and unsignalized intersections. So um, in fact, the recently completed EMCOR project along Green Street and the soon-to-be-completed IDOC project along University Avenue. Are both real good examples of how, um, you know, the, the capital investments being made in Urbana are advancing. Um, cyclist and pedestrian safety. So um, and again, you know, like many of the policy objectives that we have, um, we incorporate the values that are reflected in those objectives. Like the Vision Zero Plan in the prioritization of our resource allocations, rather than making separate resource allocations. It's incorporated into our work. So again, happy to answer any questions on the transportation projects or any of the individual projects next week. And um, we can answer questions about the overview slides um, this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to, I think Will's got the first set of slides, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, thanks, Carol. So before we get started, I kinda briefly wanna talk about, um, kinda what is the CIP for anyone who may or may not be um, familiar with it. Um, so essentially, the CIP is a schedule that the city has to improve, replace, maintain. Uh, or build new city infrastructure assets. Um, there's different types of asset classes, but mostly it's, you know, transportation-related, sewer-related or public facilities. Um, and we pay through these assets through uh, five different dedicated funds that have their own revenue sources. So these are all separate from the general fund, is when we're paying for these projects. And Carol was talking about it, uh, the CIP is project-based, so kind of, and you know, the bulk of the CIP is essentially just the schedule of the projects. Um, as the funds allow us to do them. And how is it made? Um, people are uh, on that column to the right here, there's a lot of different folks with a lot of different expertise that help uh, inform the creation of the CIP. From the public work side, engineering, uh, the operations who kinda see the things as they are. You know, some help from finance staff, and then uh, Carol myself, then um, you know, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, so if any questions about the projects. They're definitely for Tim. In the process, um, I kinda like to think of it as a linear circle, sometimes it's a very iterative process where, um, we kinda go back and forth. But I think the major, you know, the three major blocks, um, are kinda the data collection and analysis, the project creation. And then, you know, figuring out your financial constraints, and then kinda all that put together, you get the CIP. So today's presentation, uh, we'll talk kind of mostly about this uh, asset summaries, which is kind of parallels. Uh, section, section two, um, of full of CIP, which is online now. Uh, but before we do that, and then Carol's saying, we'll go pretty fast, um, there's a lot of information in the CIP, I think if we try to go through it all. It gets a little tedious, but um, we did attach, you know, the entire document in the packet, so. Um, you know, we're ready for any questions if you have them. But before we go into the asset summaries, there are just a couple of main highlights that I kinda wanna briefly touch over, um, just cause I think they're. Um, kind of important enough before you kinda, the mind go, the mind goes numb with numbers. So the first one is, this was talked about, um, when the budget was presented, but the Equity and Quality of Life Project. So this is a two million dollar project, which is as of now undefined, and I think so, um, going forward, I think, working with you guys to. Uh, figure out what the parameters of this project is, I think, you know, the, the basis of it is that it's, there are infrastructures that are, you know, focused on these kind of high value. Uh, maybe a little bit smaller uh, cost projects, kinda in underserved areas to get, um, you know, some better quality of life. You know, I think the Kent Street lighting project was the example used earlier, which that's a picture of. Kind of the other, another main point in the CIP, that's I think important to take note is, this is the first year that the CIP calls for the city to borrow some funds. The city hasn't borrowed funds for capital improvements all that extensively in the past. I think the current bonds we have outstanding for, in the CIP are for Windsor Road. But over the next two years, we're scheduled to spend about $10 million on our facilities plan. And that's implementing the facilities master plan that we, gosh, I don't know how that, we started it, but we finished about two years ago. We started it last year. There's a couple of delays. So this is the first year, I think it's just shy of $4 million that we're starting to spend. And that's really for a couple of main projects, replacing a couple of fire stations with new buildings, some design and improvements of the city building. And then there's a lot of different components of the Public Works facilities that are getting remodeled as well. I think just another quick point on this is that $10 million figure is from the Facilities Master Plan, which is our, they're very high-level estimates, kind of in kind. So as this first year, this upcoming fiscal year, as we're going through a lot of design for most of these projects, you know, those, I think there's going to be some variability in the final numbers as scopes kind of, you know, firms up and as engineering costs come in. So I, you know, I would expect those numbers, you know, for each project kind of fluctuate a little bit as we get some real data. And then this is kind of what everybody thinks of, I think, in their first reaction to the CIP is big transportation projects, which you kind of see the four of them here. And I think this is just, you know, main slide is this, is that there's, you know, kind of talking about the prioritization method of how we do it. I think the major way we prioritize projects right now, kind of the primary factors are road classification, road condition, and safety issues. And that kind of drives the basis for most of the transportation projects. And then we have a lot of secondary factors too, like project linking, bus routes, age, funding assistance. But those kind of top three things, so streets that are tierly roads that have, you know, decreasing pavement condition scores kind of get bumped up to the list or higher on the list. And kind of the last main conceptual point to talk about before we get into numbers is the other thing that we focused on this year is looking at our maintenance and kind of systematic capital improvement programs. And I think the main point behind all these, you know, new project lines or, you know, changing some money behind the project lines is try to be more proactive rather than reactive. So, you know, I think Tim will tell you, show you that you're kind of behind the eight ball. But when you're reactive, you end up paying more and have less effective outcomes. So we're trying to be a little bit more strategic, more, more forward-thinking in how we kind of have these smaller capital improvements or maintenance programs to try to be a little bit more effective. So with that, I think Tim is going to kind of go through kind of all the asset summaries, kind of give you a rundown of the numbers.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. So this year, one of our big things was really trying to just assess our situation as a whole and try to look at all of our assets, the life cycles of these things, you know, what kind of expenditures are we doing? And are we keeping up? You know, are we, are we gaining? Are we falling further behind? So I think if you want to look at the asset valuations, these are kind of high-level numbers that I worked on with our team to try to assess, you know, what makes sense for everything we own. So we developed these eight asset classes. We have better information on some than others. Pavement, we recently paid for a management system that came in and scanned our roads to kind of give us a report card of our roads. So we're, we're in a better situation there than others, which is great, because as you can see, it's our highest valued asset, just under a half a billion dollars. But generally, this is just try to give us an idea of, you know, how long should we expect these things to last? And then what kind of value is tied to these? Because, you know, generally speaking, we're not stockpiling this money waiting for a rainy day, or we haven't in the past. But some of this is seeing, kind of self-evaluating ourselves to see how we're doing and then see where we need to work on it. And, you know, again, these are very high-level. When you start looking at the number of assets we have and what we have, you know, the idea will be that this is going to be iterative and will be better in the future. But generally speaking, you know, that's kind of the overview of that. So if we look at, you can go to the next one. So we look at that as a whole, based on those life cycles of all of these assets and the cost to reconstruct them in today's dollars. The annual expenditures that we would be making to meet those assumptions would be just under about $15 million. And, you know, that says that, you know, at year 75, every bridge is getting replaced. And that year, you know, at 100 years, every sewer is getting replaced. Well, we have assets out there that are much older than that already. So we know that that's not exactly right, but we also have assets out there that we've replaced after 20 years and we're hoping to get 40 years out of them. So generally speaking from these, you know, these are just high-level estimates, but it's kind of a good target for us to kind of set ourselves up for, to compare what we're doing versus what we think we should be doing if these estimates are right. You can go to the next one, Will. So in talking about that, you know, what we're actually spending on our CIP, generally speaking, from FY '22 through '26, you know, we're averaging about 6.7 million. Treating the facilities is out of pocket, being as we're borrowing against that. But generally speaking, we're spending about half of what we should be spending on capital investment for these things. So we're using these things longer beyond their life, so the quality goes down. And ultimately, the sacrifice is level of service. You know, generally speaking, we look at that and then we pair that with our operations and maintenance. And, you know, that should be kind of our total expenditures. And again, this is a pretty rudimentary number, this 1%, but we kind of gave it the sniff test and we said, you know, that although each asset class might not be perfectly at 1%, this 1%, the 10 million here is in the ballpark for what we think this should be. And we compare, we take that 10 million with the 15 million we should be doing in capital improvements. That's about $25 million a year that we would be either investing in operations, maintenance, or replacement of these public infrastructure assets. If you want to go and go to the next one, Will. You know, this is what we are spending. So we take our operations budget, we take some of the the maintenance programs that we're instituting in the CIP, and we're, we're a lot closer to the right number here. You know, we're averaging, you know, probably eight and a half million dollars a year. And theoretically, we're saying we should be spending 10 and a half. So we're, we're in a lot better position there as far as operations and maintenance, but we are, we are still underfunding it. And ultimately, those things compound together. So if we are underspending on operations, maintenance, we're underspending on capital reinvestment. You know, the, the quality or the condition of our assets is declining, it's compounding every year. If we do less maintenance on things, we get less life out of them. But we're also on the other side, because we're not replacing these with realistic life cycles. We're extending the, the use of these facilities much beyond. And basically, it's not a sustainable setup. So we're trying to prompt that conversation, you know, address that, okay, we think that there may be an issue here. And, you know, some of that comes iteratively, year in, year out, when we revise our assumptions to say, you know, does this make sense? Is this actually right? But generally speaking, if you, you look at it, we're, we're by doing less maintenance, things deteriorate faster. But by not replacing them on their lifecycle, we're using these well beyond their life. Basically gets to a point where we have assets that we just can't, we can't keep up with maintenance and we can't afford to replace at some point if we don't start addressing this and kind of reversing the cycle on that. Go on to the next one, Will. So the revenues for these things, you know, and the things that pay for this, we've got general fund operations that pays for the operations, crews and maintenance that we do on an annual basis. We've got the unrestricted CR&amp;I that kind of goes towards, you know, projects that generally don't have dedicated funds. We've got the bond proceeds that are specifically more for the facilities at this point, that again, don't have dedicated funds, motor fuel taxes, both state and local. We pursue state and federal grants if and when, you know, they're available, they're attainable. We have the sanitary sewer fund, we have the stormwater facilities fees, and all of that goes into pay for all these different items of public infrastructure. On the line ends for the state and federal grants, the ones that we, we target are typically related to our MPO status, the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Champagne-Urbana Urbanized Transportation Study. And these, this is money that is dedicated funding for our region. And then in, within that group, we work together to try to address the most, the highest regional needs with that funding. You know, as we go on, so essentially, the revenue sources, again, just to highlight a little bit there, you know, general fund, the MFT taxes, the grants, the bonds, the sewer benefit tax and stormwater utility fee, and then what they pay for. You know, generally speaking, we've got some, you know, unfunded public infrastructure that, you know, we have to dig into our general funds for, or we're sacrificing the level of service that we, we perform these things. You know, we do have control over things like our local motor fuel tax, our sewer benefit tax, and our stormwater utility fee to try to make that shoe fit. So if we feel like we're underfunded in those locations, we can look at, you know, what can we do locally to try to help that? You know, in addition, obviously trying to seek outside funding for all of these things as well. You know, ultimately, what this boils down to is we have a funding gap. You know, if we were to spend the, if we were spending 15 million CR&amp;I, 10 million in operations and maintenance, you know, we'd be spending about 25 million a year. On average, we're, we're hitting about 14 million a year, which, you know, would indicate we have a funding gap of 11 million a year, which really, you know, again, these numbers are high-level estimates, but generally speaking, they're not so wrong that this is wrong. You know, maybe it's not 11 million, maybe it's 10 million. But generally speaking, if you look at this, we're about 56% funded if all of these estimates and assumptions are correct, which would indicate, you know, we're going to have declining conditions unless we change what we're doing. And that became evident in our pavement maintenance program this year as we ran some scenarios and said, okay, if we keep spending X amount of dollars on this every year, we watched our average roadway rating continue to drop a half point to a point of the pavement condition index, indicating that, you know, we need to kind of be looking at this stuff and try to plan to, you know, write this for the long haul. Some of the grant funds that come in, you know, the ARA funds and things like that are certainly helpful. But, you know, ultimately, this is, you know, a long-term goal to get it sustainably funded so that, you know, we're not waiting on the windfalls to come in. You know, they're always helpful, but we need to get, in my opinion, get to a point where we're a little bit more sustainable on how we're doing all of this. So kind of the next thing that we've included this year is individual asset summaries, so kind of looking at these more individually. And we don't have a ton of great data on all of these. This year, we're going to get better on that. Again, the pavement stuff is stuff, is the thing that we have the best handle on. The idea is that as we progress through this, we're going to get better data on all of these things so that, you know, the information is easier to follow. But Will, if you want to just go down to the pavement section, you know, we've got bridges, public facilities, everything's broken out here, but pavement's a good place to start just because we do have dedicated funding for it and we do have pretty good data on it. If you look at this, just graphically, you know, essentially the red line is our dedicated revenue, which is from our local and state motor fuel tax funds or transportation grants. And generally speaking, you can see the trend line is that we have just enough money to pay for our maintenance, but capital improvements are really, you know, they get, we have to find a way to prioritize them with either subsidizing them with general funds, getting grants to pay for them, things like that. But, you know, in a perfect world, this, this red trend line would be, you know, a little bit higher up so that we were able to, you know, keep up with all of our operations, maintenance, and, you know, a portion of our capital improvements, if not all, you know, in a perfect world, obviously. You know, but generally speaking, I think the high-level view of our asset thing, our assets, individual asset summaries is, you know, we've got a number of assets that we just have no dedicated revenue. Technically, the local and state motor fuel tax can pay for roadways and sidewalks and traffic signals and streetlights, stormwater improvements, some urban canopy stuff. But, but generally speaking, it's, it's not realistic for us to spend that money on those things when our roadway pavements are such a high-ticket, high-dollar item that we are also, you know, severely underfunded for. So typically speaking, the things that we have dedicated funding for is going to be our roadways, our sanitary sewers, and our storm sewers. And then outside of that, you know, everything else kind of becomes a compromise of either working to get general funds, prioritizing, you know, asset needs within that transportation division. You know, if we, if we come, get to a point where we have a bridge, you know, replacement, we're, we have a high-dollar item for a low footprint gain, you know, if we're replacing a 200-foot bridge for, you know, $2 million, it's, you know, cost per square foot of infrastructure is minimal. So you know, I won't go through a lot of these in details. We'll just kind of buzz through a couple more. You know, sidewalks and paths, you can see generally speaking, we, we try to allocate some funds towards trying to keep our sidewalks, you know, functional, trying to address the biggest priorities and pitfalls first. But, you know, we're probably not on a sustainable cycle to really address everybody's needs and then address proactive needs at this point. You know, really, a lot of this becomes reactive because of the nature of, you know, no dedicated funding and, you know, trying to be realistic with the, the usage and, you know, trying to best fit the public as a whole. If you want to go on, Will. Sanitary sewers, you know, as you can see here, we have dedicated revenue. It shows us keeping up pretty well with the maintenance on sanitary sewers. It's a little bit askew because our capital improvements for sanitary sewers, we don't have, we haven't, we don't have all the greatest data now to really assess that. But generally speaking, my guess is as we get better data, we're going to see that we have some unfunded capital improvements that would be funded directly by this and which would, requires to look at our, our rates that are impacted by this or, you know, do asks towards the CR&amp;I funds to help support that at some point. The storm sewer facilities, again, you can see we're, we're able to keep up with our maintenance pretty well on this. And this is another one, we did just, we have the stormwater master plan has a pre-final copy has been delivered to us that is kind of looking at our stormwater facilities as a whole and doing an assessment of, you know, various things that we can do better and, and looking at our capital improvement needs there. I think generally, these two have kind of fallen by the wayside as far as addressing real capital improvement needs, because typically they have such a long lifecycle of 100-plus years. So you don't see the deterioration in five or 10 years of an administration. You see it in 40 years. But generally speaking, we're going to get better data on that as well to kind of support if, if, if there are needs or funding gaps related directly to this. You can go to the next one. Urban canopy, you know, we're Tree City. And generally speaking, again, Arbor and Canopy, we don't have dedicated revenue for. So all this typically is coming out of the general fund to help sustain this type of stuff. You know, we, we have received some special grants and financial assistance from Silent Partners recently, which is fantastic. And, you know, the idea here is, you know, we, we want to continue this and looking at this as a sustainable asset. And I know right now, like one thing that comes up on Urban Canopy is kind of our target operations and maintenance. You know, we'd like to be doing routine pruning on like a seven-year cycle. And I think we're getting, we're closer to 12 to 13 years, just based on, you know, financial constraints, staff constraints, things of that nature. But generally, looking at them as kind of an asset as well, because, you know, ultimately, they do provide a lot of environmental benefit. But we also have to be able to fund the operations, maintenance, and then removal or replacement of those as needed.
Did you want to go back to?
I think this is, no, I think we're okay. You know, sidewalks and paths, light signals, a lot of those are related to public transportation. Again, there, the dedicated funds for those are local and state motor fuel tax. Outside of that, it's always going to be an ask to either the general fund, the the CR&amp;I fund, or, you know, pursuing grants to help support those things. And I hope we'll be, next year, we'll have better individual asset summaries to paint a, paint a better picture of each one individually.
So I'll take, back over just to finish up real quick. So Tim has kind of mentioned it, but, you know, before we go to questions, you know, there are things that we're doing in this upcoming year as part of the CIP to, you know, continually improve it. Carol touched on briefly how two CIPs ago, we really kind of flipped the script of how we organized it and how we thought about the CIP. And this year, we did the asset summaries, it's kind of a new deal. So going forward, the next year, this is kind of what Tim has been talking about, is kind of, you know, take a push towards more strategic asset management and that kind of being proactive. You know, we have some new plans, we're collecting more data, but then taking that, those new plans and datas and, you know, more data, but then taking that, those new plans and datas and, you know, utilizing that in an effective manner. And to try to, you know, I think, you know, when you're using the data, you can, you can ultimately decrease the the maintenance costs and the capital costs over the, when you use it effectively over the lifecycle of an asset. So when we talk about the funding graph, gap, you know, the more effective you are with how you do your kind of programs, you know, that's one way to help keep the costs down. And then at the flip side of that, which kind of Tim was talking about, is one thing we want to do over the next year, is take another look at our rates for our local motor fuel tax, our sewer benefit, sewer benefit tax and stormwater utility fee. So there's a lot of ways you can look at it, but I think, you know, the the goal for us is to kind of look at, define what an acceptable level condition is. So when you have roads, you know, our pavement ranking condition, you know, you get a hundred all the way down to zero, and, you know, there's, you know, there's not a single sweet spot, it's just, you know, the quality of level of service, so figuring out what we want that, you know, level of service to be, and then kind of backtracking from there, you know, how much does that cost and what are their rates going to be? So that's something we want to explore in the upcoming year, so that by the time we get to next year's CIP, you know, we can have some, you know, proposals for changes in rate if needed. So with that, that's kind of what we have for the presentation slides, but there's a whole lot in CIP, so, you know, I think, or Carol saying, we're happy to take any questions now, or if there's, you know, things you want, a more detailed presentation on, we have a couple more weeks until the budget gets passed.
Okay, are there any questions for Will, Tim, Carol? Anybody?
Here has her hand up.
Grace. Grace? Oh, Jia.
Thanks. I have a couple of quick questions, which might be more related to specifics. But one is, I'm noticing, and it's come up a number of times today, that there's two million for the equal projects, but in the budget, it says one million. Is that, are those two separate pieces? I just wanted clarification on that.
I think that Elizabeth might have mentioned that when we did the overall budget presentation that there's.
That wasn't there. Okay. There's a lot in the budget.
It's two million dollars.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And and then I remember there was a while ago that there was a discussion about the Lincoln and Springfield area, that part of the road that there might be funding from the federal government. How does that play into the the project that's in this CIP?
Basically, that was an earmark request that we, it just came up probably two months ago at this point, and they said, you know, calling anybody that has shovel-ready projects, you know, put your name in the hat, try to get this money, you know, with no guarantees to whether we're going to get it or not. So right now, it's it's in their budget, it's budgeted under our state motor fuel tax funds. If we are able to acquire funding, federal funding for that, the the state motor fuel tax funds will be cycled into other projects into the future, and we'll we'll use those federal earmarks if we're awarded it.
Yeah, thank you for that. The other thing that's come up a couple of times is the Kinch Street lighting project. Could we get information about how much that project costs, since we're we're thinking about what some of those equal projects might be for the coming year?
We can get, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
If you know, you can tell tell her, Carol. I I'm really, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I thought it was, I thought Kin Street was a few hundred thousand dollars in lighting upgrades.
Yeah, it was between two, twenty-five and two-fifty.
Okay, yeah.
And that was for about, I think, eleven or twelve streetlights.
Thanks.
Any more questions, Grace?
Thanks. I have a few questions and comments. I might lay them all out, and you can decide if there's any that are worth answering tonight or worth putting in the next deeper dive. First, I wanted to say that I appreciate the work that you guys are doing with having a systemic prioritization, especially for roads and that other kind of infrastructure. I think that's really important. I don't think we can continue with a complaint-based or companion, opinion-based kind of system of prioritizing. So I really like that in the full CIP, we can see how you prioritize the different levels and some justification for that. So I really appreciate that it's kind of more data-driven and has a system for prioritizing that is shared with us in the public. So I think that's great, and I appreciate that, and I'd love to see more of it wherever possible. I was wondering about some of the big-ticket projects, some of those roads, they seem like gateways to campus area to me, and I was just wondering if that was like part of the prioritization or consideration. And I know that they have a separate kind of boundary that they take care of. And I would love to see some of the full data on the street conditions, if you're able to share that.
Sure.
I was also wondering.
Just, just real quick overview on the uni, the pathway to the university type stuff. I think that just is more of a happenstance that more cars use that arterial. So those, those is just naturally got, they they get prioritized because there's, there's more users on it on an average day. Both Lincoln and Florida see are two of the roads with our higher average annual daily traffic, so they get in in our systematic decisions, you know, major safety impacts, roadway condition, but then also functional class, which really is tied to roadway usage, and how many users do we have on this roadway? So I think those just kind of naturally, it, because there's a lot more users using those roads, going to campus, they've just kind of bubbled up because of the number of users on them. Less, less so because of campus, more so because of the the number of users, which I guess technically is linked because of campus.
Thank you. And I was also wondering about the urban canopy and wondering why there's no dedicated fund, even though we know that that's a consistent expense. And I was wondering, is it two hundred per tree per year that was the quote? In one of the slides, it was like two, comma, zero, zero. I'm sure if it was two thousand or two hundred.
I I think that's, I think that was two thousand, and, you know, that I think that that number kind of shocked some people, but generally speaking, if we're just replacing a tree with a warranty and a contractor's doing it, we're probably more like five hundred dollars a tree, but we're trying to, when we do an asset valuation, we're looking at, you know, an in-kind replacement. It's unlikely that we're placing a twenty-year-old tree with a twenty-year-old tree. So we've kind of met somewhere in the middle on that. The the asset valuation of a twenty-year-old tree is probably way more than two thousand dollars, but, you know, trying to figure out a combination of what would we replace it with, but also what is it worth, and trying to figure out what what number makes sense in between there.
Now, I was also wondering if the commissions were involved in this. Like, I saw that the BPAC was, you know, one of the kind of organizations in a lot of the pavement projects, but I was wondering if any of the other commissions were involved. And I think in general, they they could be utilized. You know, we have volunteers here willing to do the stuff in different fields of expertise and interests, and I was just wondering if they were involved in this.
So one of the, as we've been evolving, so not, we have not directly engaged them, although they they're, they they are, as, they have given the same opportunity as the as the general public to comment on the on the CIP. One of the goals that we have as we've been evolving the process is, I think we're doing, we did a better job. Each year, we do better, right? So we did a better job of of incorporating more feedback from outside of public works this year internally, and we know we want to engage the boards and commissions. We also want to engage our, you know, local taxing partners, so the Park District. And and we did have one conversation with the Park District. Oh, this is probably like six months ago, just to kind of share in general what we're doing, but if we can, you know, do do projects together, like if the school district is rebuilding a school, and we can do a road project at the same time, and maybe there's a park nearby, we can really leverage that. And then we we would actually like to do some public engagement, more public engagement than just this around the CIP, but it's all a function of of having enough staff time. So I think after we get the CIP documentation where we want it, so it can just kind of roll forward, then we're, then we won't have that, that, that same level of staff time committed to developing the CIP and the superstructure of it, and and we can do more engagement across the board. That's a goal of ours. We we haven't achieved it yet.
Thank you. And one more follow-up to that, then, what opportunity did the public have to comment on this? Or are you saying that will be coming up?
Well, it, they, it was in the packet, so they'll, when they could have commented on it at the public hearing on the budget, because it's part of the budget, they can comment during public comment for the next couple of meetings before you vote on it. So, and or they can just give us feedback via email. But this, this is why we do the presentation.
Mary Alice.
So I, I really like the transportation project book. It's, it's a huge improvement from when I first came on city council. It's a lot more readable. It's a lot more understandable. One thing that I noticed as we were talking about the roads, because that is such a huge amount of assets, is that in in the road pavement, there's a reference to the current cities, the current code for roads that may not last for twenty years. And I know the Savannah Green, I think the alleys were the ones that we were slated to try and fix, especially since we just approved a new subdivision plat. I'm wondering if there's any discussion about updating that city code, so it can be reflective of the actual years that we think that those will last.
I think Tim can probably add something to this. You know, the subdivision, I don't know what they call it exactly, but the subdivision code and and they call it the manual of practice in in CD. That's been a work in progress for a while now, and we know that that that's an element of it. But another element of of what happened at Savannah Green and several other places was that we didn't, we were not, and this is as I understand it, since I wasn't here, but we were not diligent about verifying that the construction that was being done was to the standard, however, however, what I want to say, deficient that standard was, we didn't even make sure that that standard was being met, and we have some very deficient roads that are, you know, we're seeing the the results of it. So we didn't hold the developers accountable who were installing the roads, even to the standard that we now think is deficient. So it's, it was kind of a, you know, a confluence of bad, bad behavior and bad standards.
And just.
What is the, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Just to add to that, the subdivision development code, you know, as we go through that, it's, a lot of developers will hang their hat on whatever the minimum requirements are. You know, I think we're, we're looking, we have money in the budget this year to, from the engineering division, to try to help work together with CD to work on updating these codes so that they're more representative of, you know, two things, you know, what we should expect and also what we can afford to fund. You know, if we're allowing roads to go in that can't last the service life in which we can afford to replace them, that's a problem.
Right. I mean, right now, we already have deferred, I'm going to call it deferred maintenance, but really deferred replacement. We don't want to continue to dig ourselves into a hole. So I guess I would say we need to update that as soon as possible, because every time something's built, it's built to the rules that we currently have on the books.
I I do want to say one thing just for perspective, and it and it's not in defense of what happened in the past, but if you look at the subdivisions, and, you know, we don't have, other than Union Gardens, which didn't go forward, you know, we don't really have any new subdivisions going in, and the infrastructure and the road, the cost of installing the roads and the and the utility infrastructure is a huge cost, and it's, it's really what has prevented some of the additional build-out and or or subdivision, you know, actual plating and stuff in certain, in certain subdivisions, because they they cannot, the the cost for which they can sell the lots doesn't, doesn't account for the cost of installing the infrastructure. So there's this dynamic at work about the cost of the infrastructure and the standards that we set and the and the market dynamic. So I just want, you know, to be fair, to give you that perspective.
So the, the, the area just south of, was it Myra Ridge, the one that we just passed, right? So that is, if they build that, that will go in under the existing subdivision code. That's the, that's the most recent one that we passed.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, James.
Yeah, and I realize this is probably more of a community development to comment now, because I was just, I was just staring, Mary Alice, at this, this sea of red for Savannah Green and those alleys, and I just sticks in my head that we we would not make that choice now to support a subdivision like that, because I think of the stormwater management and and all the things that go along with it. I know that, I know it was an experiment, to some extent, it was being done in a couple of communities in in the Midwest, but it it now, it it seems like a mistake. So I would, I I would say that this is almost an element of, I would hope this would be an element of comprehensive planning to to think about some of these things in the big picture as far as what subdivisions in the future might look like and how we could manage that and and not create rows and rows of alleys that that could be installed in substandard way, even if it was installed in a standard way, it's a, I'm, I'm surprised that we're responsible for them, right? I mean, they're, they're not really roadways. They're, they're basically to serve the the people who live on the streets for for access and garage. It's kind of like a, a community driveway, more than a than a roadway. So I just, I just hope we find a way to not, not do that in the future.
Shandra. You had a question, Shandra?
Yes. So you guys presented the data about the roads and how you finally gotten sort of some data and and stuff around that. Is that possible to do that with sidewalks throughout Urbana too, so that we can start prioritizing fixing those as well?
Generally, depends on the technology. There, there's some technology out there and I, I just know about this because a former intern of mine is working on developing that technology at U of I to basically provide an affordable way to, usually, the biggest problem is getting the information and getting it analyzed. So, you know, the time and the money that it takes to understand what all we have out there and the condition of it is immense. So that's why people like my former intern, who's a grad student at U of I, is working on developing something that allows us to do that economically, because right now, sending somebody out to survey every stretch of sidewalk is not economical to to do that. We could replace quite a bit of sidewalk for that, but if we could find a way to make that an economical solution, we could certainly look into it.
Um, just to add something, I'm sorry. I believe that that RPC did a sidewalk inventory, and it's not as granular as what we were able to do with the, the pavement, but I can, I can forward everybody a, a link to the sidewalk inventory that is, does help inform where priorities should be set.
On the bottom of the individual asset summaries in section two, there should be links to data. So the sidewalk is there, and then the the pavement condition, there's a question about that earlier. You can go to see the pavement condition there as well. The pavement condition link is also on the the CIP page on the website.
Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a moment?
Sure. The chair recognizes Sharice.
Thank you. I guess a question that I have, there's, there are a couple, because today when I was out, I saw USIC is something like US infrastructure consultants, I guess, is what it is. Do, are they involved at all with the city, doing anything as far as that? Or is that a federal issue, a federal thing?
US, USIC is actually a utility locating company. People like Ameren, Illinois American, private utilities, basically employ them to perform the Julie locates that are required for construction jobs.
Okay.
They they work for municipalities and stuff too, you know, if if it were ever the privy of the city, you know, we could employ them to go do our Julie locate, Julie locate, so.
Okay. I just, I just like, what are they, they're, they were just all over my, my ward today, looking, I was checking, let me ask that question at the meeting. The other thing is, earlier, one of the people said something about, in public input, said something about cameras for certain areas where there seems to be an increase of gunfire. Would that fall under the CI, CIP in or in the, the capital, the, the infrastructure plans of Urbana? It could. I mean, we don't have that as an asset class at the moment, but it could. The installation of that, is there, is there a way that, that something that like that could be surveyed as to what would be the, the, you know, I I know this is just, this was just a suggestion from in public input, but if we were to try to
but if we were to try to do something like that, is, is the cost of that insurmountable or?
I mean, you can see from, you can see from the, the CIP that we already don't have enough money for the assets that we have, but it's a question of prioritization. I think if it were the sense of the council that that was something that you wanted us to explore, we would. I mean, if it was, if it was just one or two people, that's a big investment of time on our part. If it's not a serious, something, if it's not, if it's not something you seriously want to pursue. But, you know, if that's something the council wants us to pursue, we can do that.
Okay, and that's basically, those are my questions right now. Okay.
Do you like the chair back, Sharice?
Yes, I would, Mary Alice.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions for Tim, William, or Carol? All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor Marlin.
I just was waiting for everyone to finish. I just want to say I appreciate council members who recognized the emphasis on data-informed decision-making with regard to this capital improvement plan. And that was very intentional over the past few years. We invested in assessing every mile of pavement in the city. We invested in the facilities, planning and space needs, space and programming needs assessment. And we invested in updating the stormwater master plan. So really, you know, for the first time in my entire experience as a council member or mayor, we actually have the data necessary to make decisions and set priorities and have a rational reason for doing so. And with, with regard to lights, I don't know if people know, but it, with cameras, there's, I'm told there are close to 3,000 cameras on the U of I campus, which includes a significant portion of the city of Urbana. Now, it's not the areas where you're, you're seeing gun violence, but the campus has made a huge investment in video cameras. And in fact, that's how they solved the, that was the break in the yin yang saying kidnapping was through those, those surveillance cameras. So there, there's a great deal of experience with cameras on campus and that's a resource that also could be utilized if you, if you so desired. But anyway, I appreciate recognizing that data is now informing our capital improvement plan. And I think we're going to be much better at making decisions in terms of maintenance and replacement. So thank you.
Okay. So next is our public input. Thank you, Tim, Will, and, and Carol for that. Public input and if you have something that you would like to contribute to the meeting, would you please raise your hand so that I can see? If there's anybody that would like to contribute and say anything? Okay. Reverend Underwood, or who did I hit? Arthur Paganini, I'm sorry. Arthur Paganini.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, actually, okay, thanks for giving me time. This is going to, this should be very quick. But earlier, I know that someone came on to the public comment arguing for cameras. And I just wanted to express that I don't think that that would be a good idea. I know that, like, cameras are seen as something about, like, providing security, but I just think that realistically, there are things that can be, that money can be better spent on to reduce, to reduce these crimes in the first place. I think it's a very reactive solution that doesn't real, and not to mention that in the past few years, there has been like numerous stories about these like camera companies. For example, I'm looking at an article right now from Ars Technica that police can get your Ring doorbell footage without a warrant, report says. So yeah, I think that, one, it's one thing that cameras won't necessarily reduce crime. They won't necessarily make people safer. And the second thing is that we, is that cameras won't, like, we don't know who's going to be using, you know, if the police get to use these cameras, we don't know what the long-term effects of that are. I just wanted to express my, the fact that I don't think that cameras are a good idea in terms of community safety. That's all I have, have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brandy McCoy.
Yeah, I just wanted to be back right off of that and just say that I don't feel like putting cameras in, especially like specific targeted neighborhoods is how we're going to earn any sort of trust from the people who inhabit those neighborhoods. I know that, you know, you know, there is a safety concern with the violence that's going on in Urbana, but I just think that we don't want to over-target people, you know what I mean? I don't want to like, especially areas that may already be considerably more considered over policed or something like that. Like, we just don't need to be watching people, giving them a reason to be afraid or be distrustful. And that was just what I wanted to throw in there.
Okay, thank you, Brandy. Sarah Nixon. I'm trying to. There you go. Who's this?
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, um, okay, hi. I was unable to follow the earlier part of the meeting and just logged on. So I hope my comment is relevant. But I just wanted to note that, that with regard to the proposed 2021, 2022 budget for Urbana, I noticed that community development in the budget has crept up to, I think, 13.4% of allocations where it almost matches the 14.4% assigned to the fire department, but is not close enough to the 18.9% of the budget allocated to the police department. So this is a gesture apparently in the right direction. I think the day that the community development budget matches the policing budget is the day we may start to see a real reduction in crime. But of course, what Urbana's marginalized communities and communities at risk for being impacted by crime, what those communities need is not salaries for more city bureaucrats, but large-scale funding and support for things like new entrepreneurs or entrepreneurship, business development, and of course, cultural, social and mental health and wellness resources. I, I am in no way a financial expert, but even as a layperson, I'm looking at the document and wondering, where is one door in all of this? I don't think it's, I didn't see it anywhere. And it still feels like the one-door proposal and discourse has been empty promises made as part of a PR maneuver. At least that's how it resonates at this point. And also a colossal failure that, you know, not only in and of itself, but that this new proposed budget seems to be quietly shoving back under the rug. I, I think I noticed a small, sort of almost stipend assigned to crisis training, if that. Let's see, there's some funding assigned to a proposed co-responder for the police department for crisis response team, something to the tune of $35,000 to be allocated. But, but what is this new crisis response plan? And when do the people of Urbana get to hear the details as well? Where is domestic violence training and domestic violence professionals and services in this budget? Courage Connection cannot handle the volume of incidents, incidences and demand for services. We've seen that the DCFS, the Department of Child and Family Services and the Urbana Police Department are failing the children in family violence situations horrendously. And PR campaigns not backed up by, by, by fiscal commitment are, are not solving anything. The budget reflects the city's values. And what we see is that the neediest are left out in the cold year after year. And, and here we are once again. So I, I, you know, I'm offering these criticisms or concerns to the, the council and the mayor as, as a concerned layperson slash community member. And I hope that you will take up these questions and concerns and look at them very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Alan Max Axelrod.
Uh, thank you. This comment is going to be hopefully brief, but you never know. So Champagne, Urbana is a union town. That is what we hear during Labor Day parades. I'm giving an open invite to the people in attendance who are available to demonstrate that. Because tomorrow at 10:00 AM, there is a press conference where a bunch of workers are going to be announcing their unionization drive. I'm not publicly disclosing this information, of course. So anybody interested in showing solidarity with workers in Champagne, Urbana to demonstrate substantially that Champagne, Urbana is a union town, reach out to me. I will admittedly be going to sleep right after this public comment so that I could drive to Springfield to pick up a YouTuber to bring to that press conference and then drive a roommate to work. So, you know, life. Uh, I did want to note that the cahoots model for policing, where behavioral health services are provided not as a co-responder model, but as a dedicated and independent model, is not only something that has been a topic of conversation this past election cycle, but is something that was unanimously passed by the state house, unanimously passed by the state legislature, and is awaiting Governor Pritzker's signature. And even if he does not sign this, they have demonstrated that the resolve exists to override that veto. This would be a statewide integration of behavioral health into the response service for 911 to respond in some cases without the police. And it includes a specific prohibition on home rule municipalities from deviating from that. So maybe that's why one door isn't in the budget, I don't know. But I am encouraged to see that our state legislature has made a very bipartisan commitment to reducing the workload and therefore the stress of the police while also doing well by the most vulnerable in our community. Have a good night.
Thank you, Alan. Okay. And, or is there anyone else before I move on? Okay. So the next thing is ordinance number 2021.
Sharice.
Oh, sorry, what?
Staff report, staff report.
Oh, staff, I thought that was going to come at council input. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, just real quick, I wanted to let folks know that all of the city council training sessions and presentations that were given over the past few months will be up on the city's website. Most likely tomorrow, they can be found at urbanaillinois.us/council-training. I'll send that out to the council. This will include all the individual presentations made by the departments, the presentations on tip districts and enterprise zones and that sort of thing, plus all the sessions that you attended with the Illinois Municipal League. So this will be available for council and, and more, just as importantly, for the public to access. And it provides, as you know, an excellent overview of the city functions. And so these are all now one place on the website at that, at that location that I gave you. So I'm really happy to report that. And for those of the-
Could you repeat the ad, the address again?
And for the public who tuned in, after the beginning of the meet, beginning of the first meeting, I wanted to let folks know that the city of Urbana has received the American Rescue Plan funds, the first allocation, and it totals $6,487,280. We now have those funds and I wanted to thank the finance department, Elizabeth Hammond, her team, plus our grants manager Sheila Dodd for going through the process and making that happen. So, so that will be included in fiscal year 22 budget. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And, you know.
Ask a question on that?
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Um, I was wondering also about the presentation about labor negotiations. If we were going to add that too, because I appreciate that these presentations for training are being shared for us and for the public. But there's one in closed session that was kind of like a background training about how labor stuff works without the specifics. And we had talked about doing that kind of a training for the public at a later time. I was wondering if we had a, a plan for that.
Well, we can't release that particular presentation that was obtained, that was done in closed session. But, um, yeah, we can, we can work on getting a general presentation on labor negotiations.
Yeah, because that's kind of my understanding that there was a request from us that we would like to have that same basic presentation in a public forum where it can be shared.
Yeah, well, we focused on getting the, pulling together all the others first and getting those up there. And then if, hopefully, we can find time to get that other one done too. But, yeah, I haven't forgotten it, just haven't gotten it done yet.
Any more questions for Mayor Marlin? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have ordinance number 2021-06-019 and ordinance amending Urbana zoning map, Europa House 802 West Oregon Street, plan case number 2420M21. And this is coming to us from whom?
Cat.
Okay, hi, Cat, thank you.
Hi, guys. This is a request by Chris Saunders on behalf of Tailwind Holdings LLC to rezone 802 West Oregon Street from R7 University Residential to R4 Medium-Density Multiple-Family Residential. Staff finds that the request aligns with the comprehensive plan and satisfies the rezoning criteria. And at the May 20th, 21 meeting, the plan commission voted unanimously to forward the zoning map amendment request to city council with a recommend, recommendation of approval. Staff concurs. This is a location map of the property. It was formerly known as the Europa House located at the northwest corner of Oregon Street and Bucie Avenue. The existing building was originally built for apartments, but it has been used as a dormitory through the University of Illinois's Certified Housing Program until two years ago when the previous owner opted out of that program. The building is currently vacant and cannot be rented unless the property is rezoned or if there is a change to the current zoning district, which is R7. or if there is a change to the current zoning district, which is R seven. This is a zoning map. Uh, the property is currently zoned R seven. And as you can see, the north half of the block is zoned R four. Uh, this south half of the block is also zoned R seven. Nearby are apartments, group homes, duplexes, and single, single family rentals. Um, and applicant is requesting that the property is rezoned from R seven to R four, um, which is medium density, multiple fit, family residential, excuse me, uh, to allow the existing building to be renovated and rented as apartments. Um, apartments are not permitted in the R seven zoning district, but are allowed by right in the R four zoning district. This is a future land use, a future land use map of the property. Um, and as you can see, the future land use designation is university residential as part of the Lincoln Bucie corridor. Uh, the requested rezoning would allow the existing building to be preserved and reused. And multifamily residential fits the intent of university residential designation. Um, this is a screenshot from the comprehensive plan. Um, it's map eight, the future land use map. Prior to the point commission meeting, um, plenty staff and the applicant help hosted a virtual meeting to discuss the requested rezoning. Uh, ten people attended the meeting and the applicant answered questions about the planned improvements for the building. Uh, and there was also discussion about the challenges of the R seven donate zoning district. Uh, staff is exploring potential changes to that zoning district that would make it easier for existing buildings to be renovated and reused. Here's some site photos of the existing building. Uh, the applicant has no plans to demolish the existing building or redevelop the property. The existing Europa House building has a floor area ratio of one point seven five, which well exceeds the allowable FAR for any zoning district um, or any residential zoning district. And additionally, the floor area ratio, open space ratio and yard requirements are the same for both the R seven and the R four zoning districts. The applicant plans to renovate the existing building and install new flooring, countertops and appliances. Here's another site photo. Um, to summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for the requested rezoning. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts and is compatible with the future land use designation. Uh, the R seven zoning district significantly limits the permitted uses for the property and it has been vacant for over two years. Uh, the proposed rezoning would allow for the existing vacant building to be renovated and rented as apartments. So in rezoning cases, uh, the city council has two options. You can either approve or deny the ordinance. Conditions cannot be applied to, um, the approval or denial of a rezoning case. And at the May twentieth twenty twenty one meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval. Staff concurs and further recommends that the case be placed on the consent agenda. And the applicant is here to make a statement and answer any specific questions about the project. I can take any questions for staff as well.
Okay, so are there any questions for Kate? Cat? Mary Alice?
Um, first, I wanna say that, uh, Chris Saunders and the, uh, planning group, uh, did hold a neighborhood meeting. I'm really appreciative of that. And there were several people who attended. There is a typo in the memo that it was Ward two. Uh, and it was me, so it should be Ward one. Um, I I did have a question about the floor ratio. You said it was over what's allowed in R four. I know that the the current owner doesn't have plans to demolish the building. I guess my question is if that happened in the future, the the fact that the floor area ratio is, um, out of what we allow right now, whatever future building would have to either meet it or ask for a major zoning variance. Is that correct?
Yes, it would have to meet the requirements of the R four zoning district.
Okay, so I mean, uh, for for other people to know, the the university certified housing changed their rules, um, which is what made Europa House, um, basically changed ownership to the best of my knowledge, which means that they had to offer meal plans and there wasn't, there wasn't any room in this building to provide a cafeteria and so forth. So there really isn't any choice in the matter because unless somebody decides to renovate and have a cafeteria, which I don't really foresee, um, a reuse of this building and basically re-converting it back to apartment seems appropriate to me. Um, I guess the other question that I had, and it's just, I can't remember if, uh, maybe Chris can answer this for us. Is the purpose to renovate it into two bedroom apartments? Is that correct?
I believe so, but I'll let Chris answer that.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, yeah, thanks for the, uh, Cat did a great job there, uh, summarizing everything. But yeah, we're we're not, the the building already has two bedroom apartments. Um, we're actually leaving them exactly like they were previously. So it's, um, it ends up being eighteen, uh, two bedroom apartments. There's six on each floor. There is, uh, we did renovate or in the process of renovating, uh, the old office space on floor one, which will will be an actual three bedroom apartment, uh, that was used as the former office. But we've been working on the the property now for about six months. Uh, we've put, we'll put approximately a million dollars into it, but all those improvements have been really cosmetic in nature, the buildings, uh, structurally and in really good condition. And these include, you know, we we pulled permits to to add laundry units to every unit, uh, you know, fiber internet. Uh, we've got plans to 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 paint some of the outside, uh, decks and stuff that have peeling paint on them. But, uh, but overall, most of the work, the the inside layout's the same as it was in nineteen sixty eight when it was built. So that didn't change.
All right. Um, and then are you planning on renting this as a a two bedroom or are you planning on renting this per bedroom?
Yeah, just as a as a joint lease two bedroom apartment. So there's no, no room by room rentals here.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for investing in this property. It's a nice building.
Oh, it's a really nice building. They did a, uh, the previous owners took unbelievable care of it. We're, I'm so lucky to be able to step in the shoes of of the building and it's gonna be around for a long time. So we're we're excited about it.
Okay. James?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I I think I I would support this. Um, I think it's a a good return to use of what it was originally needed to be. I'm, I am curious, um, uh, Cat, if there, what some of the other details of the R seven is because I noticed that the other side of the street is labeled as R seven, but those look like large houses that are being rented out without some kind of formal uh, organization doing it, right? It's just, uh, they've got rental signs in front of them. So when it's, when it's a university residence or dormitory residence hall implication, is, are there other aspects that the property has to meet to qualify to operate?
So yeah, there are about six uses that are permitted by right in the R seven district. Um, buildings do not necessarily have to be used as a dormitory or be registered through the Illinois Housing Program. Um, they can be used as rooming houses or boarding houses. Um, and the zoning ordinance limits those uses to fifteen bedrooms. Um, but they have to have communal kitchen facilities. So that was kind of a stipulation with this case. While it was enrolled with the, um, University of Illinois Housing Program, it was being used as a dormitory, but without that communal kitchen space, it could not be continued to be used through that program. And it could not be converted to a rooming or boarding house.
I was gonna say that the buildings across the street look like they may have been fraternities or sororities at one point. But now they don't look like they are. They look like there's, there's something else. And I'm just curious if they have to meet a a particular standard to continue to operate.
So they would be tied to, um, their certificates of certificates of occupancy. In that case, if they were formerly sororities or fraternities, they likely already have that communal kitchen space. Um, and the rooming and boarding house designation would allow those bedrooms to be rented individually. However, the residents would be sharing that communal kitchen space. It's different from an apartment use where, um, you typically have separate kitchen, kitchen spaces for those apartment uses. Um, in those rooming boarding houses, um, sororities, fraternities and dormitories, it's one kitchen that serves all the units.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Saunders, thank you for your investment in Urbana. Um, I was just curious what, uh, have you been able to determine what a price point for your rent would be on this building?
Yeah, these, uh, these are renting for approximately twelve fifty a month total. Each apartment. As of right now.
Is that it? Okay. Mary Alice?
Can make a motion if nobody else has any questions.
I was gonna ask if anyone wants to make a motion.
All right, um, I move, uh, that we send ordinance number twenty twenty one zero six zero one nine. Or it's amending the Urbana zoning map, Europa House at eight oh two West Oregon Street. Plan case number twenty four twenty M twenty one onto the consent agenda for the next city council meeting.
A second.
Okay, Mary Alice made a motion. James Quisenberry did the second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, uh, Ms. Clark, would you like to take the role, please? Ms. Phyllis? Do you like to call the roll for a vote, please?
I think she stepped out to the restroom. Shall I do it?
Okay.
Okay, I'm not going in any particular order. So, um, uh, Grace Wilkin. Did you hear that?
I didn't hear anything.
Oh, sorry, yes.
James Quisenberry.
Yes.
Chandra Bishop.
Yes.
Christopher Evans.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Jaya Colasetti.
Yes.
Sharice Hershey.
Yes.
And I don't know, does the mayor vote on this one?
No.
No, okay, great. Motion passes.
Motion's bat, motion passes and we'll move that on to city council for approval. Okay, next. Uh, cuz that was the only ordinance. I'm trying to find my thing here. Okay, we have council input and communications. Uh, I think I wanna, uh, is anyone have any input first? Jaya, oh no, you spit your. Okay, I'd like to have, I'd like to say something if I could. Mary Alice, could you take the chair?
Recognize it, Sharice.
Thank you. Regarding, you know, the, it was someone that was talking about how, how, uh, having cameras is a bad thing. And I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say this. I don't know that someone who doesn't live in my neighborhood has the right to actually tell me what's good or bad for my neighborhood or my area. And, um, until you wake up in the, in the middle of the night hearing gunshots at two thirty or four thirty in the morning, I'd, and no one wants to come forward and say who, even though there may be a bunch of people that know who. And people are are too afraid to say anything because they're afraid they'll be retaliated on. Uh, we're not talking about overpolicing. We're not talking about surveillance, so to speak. There are plenty of people in our, in, in my area that, in my ward that have ring phones and main ring doorbells and so on and so forth. And one of the main reasons why we don't get, uh, a lot of information and even sometimes when we do, when people do give information, they choose not to help because they are afraid of being retaliated on. And a camera doesn't lie if it sees somebody shooting somebody else. It's that plain and simple. So although I can appreciate the the parental authority that you think you may want to pull over on, you know, you're just so worried about how we might uh, respond to that. The fact of the matter is that it's people from, it's someone from the neighborhood that even brought up the idea. And, um, I just wanna make that comment before I uh, take back the chair. Thank you very much.
All right, the chair's yours, Sharice.
Thank you.
Is there Can I make a motion to extend the meeting for till ten thirty five, just to give us enough time?
Yes, please make, well, we're gonna need a little, can we do it till ten forty five maybe? Because Okay, go ahead.
All right, I move that we extend our meeting to ten forty five tonight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Clark, would you please take the role?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes and we'll be extending to ten forty five. Anyone else that wishes to have any input, uh, from city council? Any communications, anyone wants just to share? Okay, Chandra, you got the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I wanted to bring up, um, council priorities and the fact that we have not yet um, established any for, for our council. And so I wanted to, you know, suggest that we hold a special meeting just to talk about those things, um, especially as we are going to be funding things and spending art funds and such that, as that, we need to make sure we're sort of as a council on the, on the same page with what we want to see um, improved in our city. So, um, I just wanted to be able to maybe, uh, pitch a suggestion of a date or a time. Or if that's, I don't know if that's something that Phyllis, you pitch us dates and times to sort of not bump up against any commission or board meetings. I guess also, I guess also, how does everyone feel about that, having, um, sort of a meeting of that as well?
Well, Mary Alice?
Uh, till last time, Chandra, uh, I think, I think it was, uh, towards the end of year one in my first term. Um, we had a facilitated conversation. And I know that Diane, you had mentioned that you were thinking of a different way to do that. So I wanted to hear your thoughts in terms of what, how we would run a council priorities meeting.
Well, it's complicated this year because of the ARP funding. And, you know, we, we need to have that conversation, which is gonna be a reflection of council priorities. So I I see a lot of overlap between your traditional city council priorities or goal setting plus this discussion overlapping with this discussion of the ARP funding and the neighborhood infrastructure equal projects. Um, and I, I, I would recommend, just based on experience, that it be one process. And we focus on that this summer. It's, it's very, very early in the four year term. It may feel like you've been here forever in terms of the amount of, uh, territory we've covered in the last month. But, but this is still very, very early in the four year term. And typically, the council doesn't get those priorities set within the first month. I mean, it just has never happened. So, so the fact that we're gonna do the ARP priority setting and the equal infrastructure discussion, I think that is, that is council priorities right there, or it should be.
James?
Yeah, I, I agree with Chandra that we, we need to invest in this. I don't know. I, I'm afraid that the timing is not gonna be in time for our priorities to be reflected in this particular budget year because I think I, I'm going to prefer to have a I would prefer to have a I would prefer to have a lead facilitated discussion um with a with a someone helping us with this. As opposed to one of us um leading it. And the reason why I say that is I and and I I don't know, I haven't sat down with each of you and talked about how you. Take input from your part of the community, your ward, but I I really think um. How this community feels. Um, is broader than uh the individuals that come and talk each week. And so I really want to invest some time uh in in talking to people as their council person. And taking their input uh to. Not because I want to do exactly what um Ward Seven wants to do, but because I need to hear all of. How they're feeling about it before I start walking down a path of um what what path I'm going to pursue. I just don't think we can look at like. By the time we have to vote on a budget, getting a a thoughtful facilitated session that. Sets out a goal that reflects what we can do or a four year period. I know there's there's a lot of urgency. In a lot of areas um that that people are feeling, but uh I don't think rushing it is is the right answer. I I like the idea of. Doing it before we start figuring out how to spend this federal money. I think we have to lay some. Some groundwork for that, and so if we can, if we can get. An idea about how to do this and do it in July or August, that would be the kind of timeframe. That I think would be possible and to do it intentionally with with some facilitation help.
And that was that was the thought on our end this summer.
Grace?
Um, I I see the rationale to that and um just throwing up the other side too. I think that we can definitely do both. To me, those seems like. Overlapping things, but also separate. I mean, our general values and goals, I think doesn't have to be, you know, we come up with the council specifically, this, this, and this is our goals. But just a time for us to talk with each other, um, because we don't have that opportunity. Um, so just for us to share general goals and ideas, I think that is a more broad conversation and just kind of introductory level versus for me that. ARP funding conversation seems like that needs to be a lot more focused and targeted. And um I don't think there's any harm in having a preliminary conversation. Just for the fact that we as seven council members can have a conversation together because we can't in any other platform. So I think it's important to have that preliminary conversation and then some other general ones too, or focus ones about the ARP. Because there's a lot of things outside of that specific budget decision that it might be helpful for people to know. Our general goals and thoughts and where we'd like to see things go.
Hey, anyone else? Chandra, did you wanna? Respond or say?
Um, what Grace said was very much it, like this is broad strokes. We're just talking about um in general what. We think the priorities are in the community and then we we meet more nuanced and. And uh more targeted and directed conversations about, you know, where exactly the money is going, but if we have. You know, sort of, if I don't know, you know, what the other six council members prioritize, then, you know. That sort of helps my suggestions and and. Ideas as to, you know, what we could do on council, so it it's just like Grace said, a conversation. It wasn't supposed to be, you know, we're putting, you know. This money here for this or that. It's just more so a broad conversation, but if you think it's. Oh, go ahead.
If, or Jaya?
I think that maybe there's a a need for a point of clarification because there, you know, there there are the formal officially listed council priorities. And I I think that that might be kind of where where folks who've been doing this longer are getting kind of in that mindset of like, okay, this is our official commitment to to our priorities for the four years. What I'm hearing is more of a a desire because. Many of us have never worked together before. Many of us are, you know. Just kind of getting into the swing of things to have that opportunity to say, there are major decisions that we are making, especially with American Rescue Plan funding. To have some sort of an open conversation because we we need to have this open openly, right? Not only because of the Open Meetings Act, but because I think. We're all committed to transparency, so being able to have that conversation and say, you know, this is what I'm thinking. Here are the needs that I'm hearing about. James, you're absolutely right. Of course, the folks who are engaged in public comment are not the only. Uh, members that we represent or the only members of our community that we're hearing from, but again, that's an opportunity to talk about what we are hearing. Um, so I I think that's kind of what I'm hearing is almost like two different pieces that folks are talking about and and if I'm interpreting this wrong, someone else step in, please clarify, but. I I think it, again, it can be a both and, not a either or, that we can have a preliminary conversation, say, these are the things that I'm hearing folks talk about that are really important. These are the things I'd like us to keep in mind while we're looking at allocation of this money. And then as we move forward and continue to develop those more formalized structures, that there would still be that time, and I I do agree with James as well, that I think having a facilitated conversation. About setting those goals, those priorities for the four year period, um, that that I would anticipate that that would take a little bit more time.
Mia Marlin?
Well, it does sound like this is the preliminary conversation. I would I would just just a heads up, this is June seventh. The conversation would have to be scheduled around the uh scheduled board and commission meetings and taking into account UPT's. UPTV staff time, so it it may, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the availability is at this point, so. But that but I think your approach is is. General conversation um would kind of set the stage for the facilitated discussion that needs to take place.
Uh, go ahead, James.
I I was gonna say, if and if we're talking about uh. A special meeting and I I'm sure people aren't gonna like this idea, but. Uh, for something like this, I I feel like something where. Uh, like the training we did on on that Saturday, like that Saturday morning. Timeframe would be a good place to do that. Where we're we're fresh and you know, the the hours are not going to roll by and and start to wear on us. I I do, I do like the one of, and I promise, I earlier I said I wouldn't do this very often, but I did miss the, I do miss the. The the one of the things the county board had was uh in certain months where there was that extra. Uh, meeting date. That was an optional study session. That the things that needed a deeper dive that wouldn't fit into the regular calendar would fit into that. Um, I'm not suggesting we we go there, but this feels like uh an out of cycle, uh set aside. Specifically focused uh kind of discussion, even if it is broad brush and not not. You know, setting the plan like a strategic plan or something like that.
Mary Alice, could you take the chair again?
Sure, Chair recognizes Sharice.
Thank you. Um, I just want to add to this. In the sense that. I don't see any reason why we cannot have these discussions or a disc- this type of discussion. During, for example, like like we're discussing, having a discussion during the COW meetings. Uh, if if, you know, something to that effect could just be put on an agenda. For one of the the COW meetings, for example. Chandra. When you do your COW meeting, you can add that to your agenda. That you, you know, that you want to discuss. Uh, particular subject, the ARP fund funding or. Even uh have the discussion about, you know, where we do a round table of where what we think our wards. Uh, prioritize if if you're thinking about something like that or um. Uh, what inputs you've been getting and we can all kind of have that kind of discussion regarding. Uh, input that we've get, we've gotten from uh. Other people in our wards via email or whatever, and that that might be helpful. I don't know. But when you when you do your, when you do your COW meeting, you're allowed to. Uh, add. What you want on to your on to the agenda. So I just wanted to put that in there.
Oh, do you want the chair back, Sharice?
Yes, I do, Mary Alice, and I the Chair recognizes Mary Alice Wu.
Yeah, I and I I understand, so it's pretty late right now. It's ten forty. Um, we want to have a good, robust conversation, so adding it as a discussion item at the end, I think, might be challenging, so I think it would be good for us to look at. What is on the docket, so to speak, in terms of seeing if we can identify a night that might not be it take as long. Um, like if we added it to tonight, it we would not have time and. Um, the the other thing I would just like to put out there is a, it is vacation time when people are are, you know, hopefully going to be going on vacation. I personally am going to go on vacation for two weeks in July, so I. I think that we all need to be available and all need to be part of the conversation, so I'm not trying to make things too complicated, but I just wanted to kind of throw out those two items.
Jaya?
Just thinking, many of us were able to make the six o'clock. Is that, I mean, it wouldn't be a deep dive. It would just be a an introduction, but just want to throw that out as another possibility of. You know, if we can't, because I I hear what folks are saying, there's a lot, people are going to be out, but at least taking that hour to have a a surface level conversation. It may be multiple weeks in a row, right? If we needed to, might be another option.
Um, Grace?
Um, yeah, I agree that a special meeting would be good, um, just so that we're not all tired after a long meeting of other stuff and we can really dedicate to it. I understand that scheduling might be difficult, but I think it's um definitely doable. And also wanted to add that with adding a discussion item, um, it doesn't have to be the, you know, the chair adding it. Any council member can add a discussion item or anything to the agenda. Um, with a second for city council, and so it doesn't have to be, you know, waiting for the meeting that we're chairing. Um, I'm, I think it's okay. But, oh, yeah, sorry, just wanted to add it, throw that out there. Um. And I I'm okay with it being a discussion item, but I do think that a special meeting would just give us a little more dedicated time and mental space. Um, I think six P M would work on Monday or a different day of the week.
Well, I wasn't trying to imply that you had to wait for your meeting to talk about what you want to talk about. I was just saying that. And particularly if she if she wanted to. Add that to her meeting, or if you want to add it to yours, that is something that you can do. Okay, any anything else? Anybody else?
So I mean, what what's, what are we doing? Are we just gonna do it in July and August? What's the final thing here? Um, or the consensus, it seems like it's very.
Mary Alice?
I'm just wondering if maybe the mayor and Phyllis could give us uh by next week an idea if there's any meeting time that it would be convenient for us to add it. To it, either adding it at six P M or uh to the agenda for a shorter agenda, if we have a shorter agenda planned. If you'd be able to do that so that we can make that decision.
Well, we're looking at, I can tell you um offhand, next week is a town board meeting in addition to the city council meeting, which is when you're going to do the deep dive into the budget. And I'm also bringing staff appointments and I can't recall offhand what the other agenda items are, so next week is a. At least a six thirty start and probably should be a six o'clock start, given the volume on that agenda, so that leaves. That's the fourteenth, that leaves the twenty first and the twenty eighth as possibilities, so twenty first is the next committee meeting, so we could look at that. But that's, and then we're out of month. This is the busiest month of our fiscal year, June is, and then and then the other thing to take into account. Um, our staff vacations as well. I'm not sure how much that will impact this particular meeting, but but. Our staff will be will be taking much needed vacations over the summer as well. And if you do know, I would say to council members, if you do know when you're going to be out of town. Um, on vacation this summer, please, I think Kate already sent around a note asking, but if you could please, if you haven't already provided. Your schedule for the summer, if you know it, please let us know so we can schedule meetings, regular meetings around that as well. So we can look at, I would say we'll look at the twenty first and twenty eighth to see what the possibilities are. Otherwise, we'll be looking.
Five, do we need to extend the meeting or do we feel like we can, do we feel like we have enough information?
I'm good. Anybody else? I guess then with no further business, uh, Chandra, was your question answered? I'm gonna ask that before before I adjourn.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with no further business before this count uh committee, uh, I adjourn. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.